Thank you very much. I think we're good to go. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Fairfax Town Council meeting of Wednesday, October 2, 2003. And I'd like to call it to order at this time. And first start with our Pledge of Allegiance. Hi. And roll call will show that all council members are here. Do -- at this point, I'm going to convene a special meeting of the Town Council as well as our regular Fairfax Town Council meeting, just because we have an event that I wanted to add on to consent, which is sponsoring the temporary closure of Dominga and Napa avenues following the Halloween parade. And this is something that we've done in other years leading up to this, but perhaps you want to say that, the Town Manager.
Yeah. And actually, what I like to do is just defer to Mr. O'Neil. He can just maybe just give the council what exactly his request is related to Halloween. And that's the consent item on your special agenda. I don't think you need to pull the consent, but maybe just it's in essence, public comment on that one item. And that'd be the equivalent of the staff report.
Okay. Thank you. And well as their public comment here?
Okay. We're the O'Neils. And we wanted to thank you for putting this on and sorry for the late notice. It's come to my attention when I was campaigning a while back that the Dominga area gets taxed heavily at Halloween. And the closure of the streets was something that they really enjoyed. The police said there was no problems in the years past, but there was a large financial burden on these people as it was such a place for everyone to go that they have an unusually large bill to fit all the needs of the trick-or-treaters coming to their house. So I was just hoping that we could approve the street closure exactly as it was last year. I didn't have a chance to get any feedback negatively on this event, so I don't know if that's been submitted. But if not, I think everything was perfect last year as to the hours of when it was closed. It was perfect. I did an after-report with the chief and he said it was fine. And I would also like to see if we can have the donation box for candy to be picked up at Halloween in which I'll go out and deliver it to all the houses. Because a lot of the houses on the mountain don't get any trick-or-treaters, but we all go down there with our kids. So the school made usually makes an announcement. And I think we collected over 150 pounds of treats last year that when we would go to door-to-door, I would give them. We'd take two pieces out for the girls and we'd give them three pounds of candy back. And it was very well received. It's just a much more safer environment for the children, not having to worry about cars. And I think it's really great for the community. Did you guys want to say something?
We want our streets to be safe on Halloween.
That's all we got.
Yes.
Valerie Hood, 79, Dominga. I live on Dominga. I love the street to be closed, but I'll tell you what. We spent close to $200. And our candy was gone by eight o'clock. And kids kept coming. And so what I know a lot of people on Dominga would really like is for people in the hills and everywhere else to come and donate candy to us because we can't keep up with the kids. And it's a great party scene. I love what happens. But I can't tell you how many of my neighbors just say, "We're not going to do it again. We're sick of it." Because we love the kids, but we can't deal with this. It's overwhelming. So if there was some way that the town could put something out about, "Hey, you guys, share the bounty," you know, you're not having to put out for your kids, but you're all down there. It would be really helpful. Thanks.
Any other comments from the public on this issue? I could bring it back here. I mean, I should say that I've also gotten some email about it. And one thing was like, drop off your candy a week beforehand. Distribute it to the, you know, a week beforehand to the residents along Dominga. And that, you know, then they could gauge, you know, buy less candy. I mean, $200 is a lot of money. Other comments?
I guess, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask, Ryan, so when would you propose, where would the treats be dropped off? And when would you propose that so we can sort of, I think, try to get this firm dialed?
I don't know what day it falls on, but I'm happy to, you know, as, I mean, last year Judy put a box out and said the box filled up pretty good. When Manor made an announcement in their minutes, it really hit the box pretty solid. I'd be happy to do it as many times as need be. If we get, you know, 100 bags of candy, I'll be happy to come pick them up when someone at the office calls me. And I'll just drop them off in a bag to every house, whether they're home or not, and just say, "This is from the people," so that they don't have to go out and buy that much. That's kind of the key is what I was doing on the rainy night was hauling 150-pound bag of candy and just keeping up with the demand. But they still had to buy a lot. So if we can get the collection going early and give them, you know, a lot of candy and from the community support, they don't have to go out and buy as much. And I think that that's going to ease the burden. So I'll be happy to come pick it up when someone tells me and just equally distribute it along the whole route on both sides. And if they come home and they're not going to be there, I'm sure they'll just give it to their neighbors.
Where would we put the box?
We did this last year and we had the box up by the police station in front of Town Hall. And I think it would be a good thing to do. Any other comments from the council? Okay. So we have a motion winds off, second Bragman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And perhaps, Ryan, you can check in with town staff and, you know, figure out a good distribution schedule. And mainly, it's about getting the word out now to people not on Dominga that that's where their candy should be going. So.
Maybe we could direct staff to put some kind of little blurb on our website or...
I think that would be quite appropriate. Thank you. Well, moving right along here.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you very much. Okay. I should report out of closed session. Basically, we have nothing to report on closed session. We talk to each other and that's about it. Sorry. So do I have, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda, an affidavit of posting?
So moved.
I have a question. I'm going to have a question on item 11 on consent calendar or a couple of comments. So I don't know if we need to pull that off of consent or how we would do that.
We could pull that off of consent. Is there any? Yeah?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I have clarification regarding the agenda? We are recommending that a couple of items be pulled from the agenda.
Yes. And I should have mentioned this actually at the start of this item. There are two items, number 13, which has to do with 130 Wood Lane, and number, item number 18, which concerns the contract with Sustainable Fairfax have both been requested to be continued until next month. And I believe there was some others that you were going to recommend in your Town Manager's Report?
That's correct. I think when we get to Town Manager's Report, I can just talk a little bit more about the other items we're requesting to be continued. But it's correct, we're pulling Sustainable Fairfax and that'll come back to you most likely in November. And then the owner of the property who submitted the appeal needs more time to develop the information she thinks will be helpful for the council in the decision-making process and has requested the item be continued.
Okay.
With number 13 and 18 zapped off the agenda and number 11 moved off consent to perhaps just after the public hearing? Before number 12, where it sits, we'll just...
Just before public hearings.
Just before public hearing. We'll move it down a notch. I move adoption.
Do you want to?
Second.
Okay. So now we have adoption. A motion winds off, a second Kohler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. And let me see. The meeting protocol, which is something I read every week, which is, "The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. And the council has a responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at council meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public and maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. The council will review the agenda at about 10:00 to ascertain which items will be heard that evening and which, if any, will be continued to another meeting, probably sooner. Any matter not started by 11:30 p.m. will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend the rule. Please turn off all cell phones and/or place them in silent mode." Okay. Thank you. And that's the meeting protocol. First up on our agenda, then, we have interview and appointments of, we have four applicants right now for the Planning Commission. One for an unexpired term to February 29, 2016, and then the other one for an unexpired term to January 31, 2015. And in terms of this, we did some informal interviews earlier, just to kind of get to know people as a council, and we should invite the applicants at this point to come forward, right? Well, we could. Okay. All right. Well, Carl Vavreck, is he here? Yes. Great. And just have everybody come forward or what's... Apologies, we haven't done this two-tiered interview process.
Right. I think what I recall from the council policy is, I mean, you can ask, obviously, name the names of the applicants, but you don't necessarily need to have them come up to make any statements unless they'd like to. Otherwise, you can just move on into your discussions of what do you want to do for the appointments, since you already conducted the interviews. And I think the council policy, we didn't really address that too specifically, how you want to handle this next step. But I think it was implied that you didn't need to interview them again at this meeting, twice.
Then twice, yeah. Yeah. It seems a little strange, but I, for one, speaking to that particular process, found it very valuable to spend 15 minutes or so talking to each individual person and kind of getting an idea of what they were like and how they thought about different things, what areas of conflict might be. There are four applicants. Phil Green, Philip Green is the first. The second one is Carl Vavreck. Heather Bennett, is she here tonight? Okay. Good. And Esther Gonzalez Parber is also here tonight. Okay. Would anybody of the four of you like to make a statement or to the public? Yeah. Well, you know, torture is part of what the Planning Commission's about, isn't it? Sorry, I shouldn't be saying that just before you point something. Please do.
Hi. My name is Philip Green and I'm a candidate for the Planning Commission of Fairfax. What I really want to say is, I just want to say that we appreciate, having lived here since 1981 and coming from Southern California originally, Fairfax has helped me wipe that out of my mind. And it's a great place to live, a great place to be, and a wonderful place to raise kids. And I just want to thank you all, all of the volunteers and everybody who works here for making it that way. So that's my statement. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Any of the other candidates want to make any statement? Okay. Well, I mean, you don't have to, but yeah.
Hi. I'm Esther Gonzalez Parber and I want to thank you for your time and your consideration. I've only lived here four years, going on five, but I just want to say that I love Fairfax and would be honored to be on the commission and help preserve and enhance what we have here. But I just want to say that I would be, you know, a very willing participant and happy to serve the town of Fairfax.
Thank you. Yeah, we have started training.
Oh, it's already on. Yeah. Hi. I'm Heather Bennett and I'm also a candidate for Planning Commission. And thank you all for the time that you devote to the town and the job that you do here because it's essential. So thank you very much. And thank you for considering me. It would be an honor to serve. I've been here for 11 years, I think now, and I've loved every minute of it and plan to stay. So if I don't make it this round, maybe I'll make it some other time. All right? Thank you very much.
Carl Vavreck, currently at 170 Canyon Road. And thank you for the time you've spent carefully considering this. I know there was a process above just the members of this council and it's good to see that you guys care so much because we all care so much. So thanks for consideration.
Well, thank you all four, then, for chiming in. And I guess I would open it up to my fellow council members.
I have a quick thought. First of all, it's an embarrassment of riches, I think, as we see with so many of our commissions and our volunteers that you'd have, you just can barely make a mistake. So to all four of you, thank you very much. And I think that no matter how we turn out on this thing, I think you're exactly right that openings do occur from time to time and we will find places. I just want to speak to one thing. There seems to be three candidates who are sort of blocked together in the architecture design side of the line. And then I think Phil Green as the attorney thing. And so I just wanted to, when I was reading the applicant's thing, I just wanted to make a recommendation for Phil for perhaps a reason that's not readily apparent. Back in days of yore, when I was on the Planning Commission and much less Gray, we staffed up the Planning Commission with the town attorney. Of course, fiscal discipline no longer permits that. But since that time, we, I think we've pretty much always had an attorney on the Planning Commission, whether it was Steve Shaken or Jack Judkins or more recently, Peter Lacks, who was so terrific. Not because they make legal decisions, but because they bring that perspective, that lawyer perspective into the room so that if a problem arises that might need a legal answer, they will, in a sense, issue spot a little bit and call it out so that it can be addressed by the council, by the planning director, or by the town attorney herself. So with that, I think all of the other three are fantastic. But to, because there is, to my knowledge, no attorney on the Planning Commission at that time, I think that that role, out of the seven, I think there should be one, certainly should never be more than one attorney on any panel. And we should make sure that we fill that slot. I think it's very important because we do not staff up with Town Council. It's my thought.
I'd like to say, being the most recent council member on the Planning Commission, one of the things I've been looking for is not necessarily a specific expertise or background, but kind of a broader view of the town, which was something I felt that I brought and others brought to the commission, is not just necessarily narrowing down on expertise, but really thinking more about some of the bigger picture issues as well as bringing your personal expertise. I will also echo what David has said, is that we really are very fortunate to have so many well-qualified people step forward and I really appreciate that. I will also say that there are other boards and committees in this town that for somebody who isn't selected, it may be an opportunity to join one of those and learn more of the different functions of the town. It really helped me to have been on Open Space Committee as well. So I also felt, from my viewpoint, which was really looking at, you know, broader vision as well as bringing specific expertise, I feel very strongly that Esther Gonzalez Parber and Philip Green bring that. But I do appreciate what Heather and Carl brought to the interviews. And I will say that doing these informal interviews really gave us more of an opportunity to learn more about the candidates. So I think that's more helpful than in the past.
Okay. Thanks, Barbara. Larry, do you want to?
Yeah, I would just, I would echo what my colleague said. It's pretty gratifying when you get a group like this of four more than well-qualified people. We have three architects that applied and an attorney who's experienced in land use planning. So little town of Fairfax has a big pool of talent and it's pretty, it's amazing, really. So, you know, as far as sort of the philosophy, you know, my take on it has always been, you know, our property rights here are reciprocal. I have rights as a property owner. My neighbor has a right as a neighbor to my property. And really, what the Planning Commission has to do is balance those competing interests. And I agree with Barbara that I see it breaking down, not just as skill sets, but sort of an understanding of how the pieces fit together and understanding not only the technical aspects of putting a building up, construction, all that, but also the character of the place that we've all come to love, preserving, protecting it, all the other cliches that you hear in public service here in Fairfax, but actually are pretty meaningful. And we've been pretty lucky to have actually been able to do that. And here it is 20 years later. Funky has become sort of chic and Fairfax is somewhat of an exemplar of good planning, which it was criticized for years ago as being an example of difficult planning. So we do have a very rich pool of talent here. And I must say, as far as, as the breakout of the various candidates are concerned, you know, I think Barbara's calling out Esther and Phil, that's kind of where my own decision-making was going. I think Carl and Heather are both excellent, in particular Carl, because he's had a lot of experience with design reviews. So that's a tough call for me. But what I was impressed about with Esther was the comment about preserving the architectural vernacular here in Fairfax, which I know is one of Jim Moore's, it's one of the statements he's made over the years that's resonated with me, is that we do have a certain vernacular of architectural style and scale. And Esther nailed it, I think, in her application, which I very much appreciated. So that is kind of my feeling from the get-go here.
Thank you, Larry. Do you have thoughts for me?
Yeah. I agree with so much of what they've already said, but I have to say that in my vast experience with planning commissions, which is very little, I'm in the midst of really being involved in something that's allowing me to get inside and look at how planning decisions are made. And I'm looking very carefully right now. So what it is that has struck me as very important in becoming and being part of a planning commission is someone who has a vision and whose vision is strong enough to hold and yet allows for them to have an openness to a more, to a broader vision for the town. So what I heard in, again, I'm going to echo, in both Phil, who has a vast amount of experience in the creating the downtown, the central downtown plan for Santa Rafael, is that what it's called, Phil? The Business Improvement District, which I think is a brilliant planning, you know, is a very successful planning, well, tool. And also, it's a great area. It's a great use of downtown space and has changed the feeling of the community. I like that he comes with that vision. I also agree that having an attorney is not necessarily a bad thing. And so I think that's really important as we go forward and we look at what's going to happen and how we're going to start talking about our downtown element and the general plan. Esther, I really appreciate your openness and clearly that you are open to looking around and learning and that, but that that vision will still guide you through the process. So I'm going to put out my recommendation for Phil and Esther as well.
Well, it seems like a trend. I guess, yeah, we have four very good applicants and that's one of the things that makes it difficult to make a choice like this. And I would say to the two people that don't get appointed, you know, please don't go away, you know, unhappy. I mean, I also, you know, speaking of, I mean, a lot of people have talked about Phil and Esther and, you know, I should also talk about Carl and Heather. And I think Carl brought a lot to the table and I've seen him active through Saferis Schools and things like that, too. And I think he is yet another that really cares about our community and has put a lot in already. And I suspect he won't give up for a long time. It's, you know, that's one of the things that makes Fairfax great, is a lot of people care about it and put a lot of energy into the community. And I don't know, it's the center of our universe, so it feels good. And Heather, I also welcome your ideas and, you know, I welcome you to our community, too. And I guess, well, it's difficult to make a choice, but I think I should take this opportunity also, as we've, I think, mentioned to all the applicants in our individual things, that next spring, we will start the downtown center plan, element of the general plan, which is basically a public workshop where everybody in the community gets to weigh in and talk about what their preferences are in terms of how we shape our downtown. This is a section of the general plan, an element of the general plan, which we, it's not required by the state, but we decided on the general plan implementation committee to, or advisory committee, to put this as downtown really mattered so much to people in Fairfax. And there was a bunch of recommendations in there about the downtown. However, the process of writing the general plan and getting it finalized and everything made it that all the public input was at least five years old at that point. So we, when we passed the general plan, we pulled that section out and said, "We need to have an ongoing community conversation about this." And that's scheduled for spring of 2014. So, or at least to start that process. So I would encourage everybody who's interested, and it seemed like there, a lot of people are, and perhaps there's people listening tonight now who get it on your radar, that this is a community-wide conversation that will be happening this spring. At this point, I, do we have a motion? We've kind of gotten some feeling. I've heard some names called out here.
Could I make a motion?
You could.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Esther Gonzalez- I would like to make a motion to appoint Esther Gonzalez Parber and Phil Green to the Planning Commission.
I think we have two different terms and you need to pick one for... Well, it makes it clear to know who's got what.
I think, I would suggest, my suggestion would be to have Esther for the unexpired term, which I believe is mine, to 13115. And Phil Green to be the, the unexpired term to 22916.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a, a motion. Kohler, second. Bragman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so congratulations. And I actually, to, to the two that were not appointed, I hope you come around. This was actually a difficult choice and there's plenty. I'm about to announce a whole bunch of other vacancies on other boards and commissions in case you're interested, or if you're interested in that. And in fact, that's the next thing on the agenda. Among the vacancies, we also have a vacancy in the Volunteer Department probably. That's pretty much ongoing at the Fairfax Food Pantry that runs every Saturday morning from 9 till 11 a.m. at the Fairfax Community Church, which is 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard over by the corner of Oak Manor. And volunteers are needed there. And it's a good place. There's no questions asked or whatever. If you need a bag of food, go there and pick one up, okay? And if you would like to help distribute food, please show up. There is one vacancy on the Open Space Committee for one full four-year term. There are two vacancies on the Planning, oh no, there are no longer two vacancies on the Planning Commission. There are two vacancies however, on the Parks and Rec Committee. There are also chipper days organized for October 20th and 27th from 12 till 5 p.m. And this is in the Pavilion Lot. So people can bring things. This is a good way to decrease the chance of fire danger around your house, especially out in the, you know, closer to the wooded areas, which is pretty much most of Fairfax. The Fire Department has excellent guidelines in case you're not familiar. But basically you can bring brush down to the Pavilion Lot between 12 noon and 5 p.m. And please don't show up at 4:55. And they will be chipped. This is done with the grant as part of our sanitary district contract. And that's October 20th and 27th. Those are both Sundays from 12 till 5. Open Space Committee Treasure Hunt is on October 27th at noon at the corner of Elsie and Bellinas. And I think you show up there at noon or just before and get your treasure map. And it's supposed to take two or three hours or something. And there is also an announcement about Resilient Neighborhoods, which is just starting up. And Renee, do you want to give some more details about that?
Yes, just quickly, this Saturday, the 5th, right here in the Women's Club, from 4:30 to 6, there will be a gathering, more of an informational gathering about a program called Resilient Neighborhoods. There have been 121 households in Marin County who have participated in the program. It's basically little eco-pods or eco-teams of neighbors, or often they're actually spread through different parts of a town. And they come together and they, they, as a team tackle things like making their homes more energy efficient, dealing with fire, fire brush clearing, working as a team to, to find programs where they, where there are rebates for, for making your, your house more, for insulation, making your house efficient, water conservation, and a whole focus on local emergency preparedness. So people, you know, knowing who has kids and who needs help and leaving contact numbers. And it's made a profound difference in small communities. I think the number is 1.6 million pounds of carbon emissions have been saved by these eco-teams. Fairfax is putting together their third one, I believe. But if you want information, if you want to join one, if you want to know who else is into it, come on Saturday between 4:30 and 6 right here.
One other thing, Renee, I recall the police chief reminding me that I think we have a late October pharmaceutical waste.
October 26th is the Second Annual DEA Sponsored Pharmaceutical Takeback Program. So, in the police station. And, and we'll put out the time exactly. I don't want to misquote the time. There will be that opportunity. Please gather up all of your pills, your supplements, your medicines. They can be non-prescription as well. Pop all those things out of the little packets that are so annoying. Put them all in a baggie, a reused plastic bag, and bring them down to the police station.
And we should put that on our website as well.
We will do.
Yeah, and I would also encourage people, last year, we ran the same program. And it was on the same day as one of our chipper days. And the person, you know, we had somebody show up about an hour after the end of the time at which you could drop off unused drugs. And the load had already left the police station and gone off wherever. So, you know, show up within the, the time allowed. And then this, all these drugs, which are very harmful to the environment when they just get washed down the drain or thrown into landfill. We've had reports of fish wigging out on antidepressants and stuff like that. So, it, it does have an effect in the environment. And, so, please get rid of the ones you don't want and dispose of them properly, which is by bringing them to this event. So, that's it for announcements from everybody, right? Anything from staff? Okay. Next up is, on reports is from our Fire Chief Roger Mier, is a report on MIRA, which is, radio?
No. No, it's after.
Oh, that's, that's after the, yeah, open time is after number four.
Thank you Mayor. I'd like to start off, before I get into this presentation, I'd like to start by making a couple introductions. From the MIRA staff present today is Project Manager Dave Jeffries and Administrative Assistant Alex Anderson. They're going to help me with some of the questions you have if we get to that point that I, that I can't answer them. Also like to thank the council for the opportunity to, to do this presentation this evening. The purpose is to provide an overview of the current MIRA Public Safety Communication System and the plans to replace that system. There's no decisions that are being requested that you make this evening. The first slide is a very brief overview of MIRA and how it fits into the handling of emergency calls. On the far left of the screen is how calls are typically, typically initiated, many times by a caller on 911. And they call one of the seven dispatch centers, one of which here is in the town of Fairfax with your police department. Once it reaches that dispatch center, it enters that MIRA Emergency Radio Communication System. From there, it goes to the towers, to all the, the first responders that are out on the street. Before MIRA, MIRA was, was developed following a series of frustrating incidents in the 1990s where one agency could not communicate effectively with other agencies working on the same incident. Before MIRA was implemented, each agency maintained their own system of public safety and public safety agencies were operating many times on different sets of frequencies. The problems were that multi-radios were required, signals were dropped, radio static caused delays, and believe it or not, sometimes radio traffic locally was actually overridden by radio traffic from as far away as the Midwest. And the system provided very limited interoperability. MIRA today, the Marin Emergency Radio Authority is a joint powers authority in Marin County to plan, implement, manage a countywide public safety and emergency radio system for the use for all the member agencies. MIRA went live on January 24th, 2004. The system includes seven 9/11 dispatch centers and 28 dispatch consoles, nearly 2,900 radios deployed across the county, uniform radio communication shared by every major safety agency in the county, and instantaneous talk group capacity for incidents and events, where the talk group is when it's set up so everybody on that incident can, can communicate, they need to communicate with each other. In other words, MIRA is the back office communication system that allows us to best protect our people and property in our community. The key aspect of MIRA success is interoperability, or how we do, how, or how do we work best with each other? MIRA connects 25 member agencies in ways that were not possible before MIRA. MIRA is designed to support inter-agency and interdisciplinary operations. And there are very few incidents or emergencies in our community that we do not involve at least police and fire, or two different agencies. In many cases, responses can include a number of agencies that now have the ability to communicate with one another. MIRA is also capable of connecting other agencies and systems together. This slide just shows the, the many examples of what MIRA can do as far as connecting multi-agencies or, or multi-jurisdictions. Now, I'd like to show you a brief video, and hopefully I got the speaker set, so it's going to work. I'm not going to blast you out.
In the world of government, almost every large project ends up with an acronym to describe. In the case of our Emergency Communication System, we use the term MIRA. You're saying it's the Marin Emergency Radio Authority.
All public employees are on the Marin Emergency Radio Authority or MIRA radio system.
This gives me access, basically, every agency, every officer, every firefighter, every public work staff, the emergency operations centers, everything I need for an access from this one device.
And every radio in the system has common channels. So regardless of who you are, what event you're on, or you're involved with, you can talk to someone else that's on the MIRA system.
We know that whenever someone is in a personal state of crisis, they dial 911. They want it to work. They want it to work as fast as possible.
They can call on that phone and know that someone's going to pick it up and that radio system's going to work. And those officers will be responding, their licenses are or not, to come help them. That's what we do.
We have to be prepared at any given moment. We don't know when the big fire's going to come or not, or when your spouse is having a heart attack, or when your child is choking.
No one's going to say it's 100% covered, but we need to be in the high 90s to know that anywhere in this county, what building I'm in, what, which floor of that building, what elevator I'm in, this radio is going to be able to talk to those that I need to speak to.
Everybody's got, what is their big call? If it's your spouse that's having a heart attack, we don't want a delay on the radio. We don't want that 90 second bell. Or if you're having a stroke, that 30 seconds in delay could mean the difference between recovering fully or not.
Technology is ever-changing. The interest of expanding the sphere of contact to include the larger region rather than just Marin County, and the imperative that comes in the world of the suppliers who service these systems for a period of time and as they develop new, better, stronger technologies under different kinds of federal regulations, they abandon one system and offer another. And we're reaching that point.
Currently, we're, we're reaching the lifespan of the hardware, not just for the end user, but for the infrastructure. And we don't want to get ourselves to a point where we max out the system. So, we've created a plan to move our communications into the next generation before the old system gets to a critical point that we will no longer use it.
With good planning and financing and community support, we need to be part of that next generation.
The next generation MIRA system will give us equipment that is reliable, that is continued to be maintained. And it will improve and increase the amount of agencies that we can actually communicate with.
Mr. Julian Ashwell, we were saying, we were in one sense ahead of the curve. We were developing interoperable, multi-agency, multidisciplinary system before 9/11. And it was after the 9/11 tragedy that, that really became a buzzword and a mantra where communication systems needed to go. And we were already there.
When we have an emergency need, we expect our public law enforcement agencies to be there for us. But we need an entire infrastructure, just like a plumbing system, to be able to provide that. And that's what this 911 emergency system is. It means that when I make the call, I can have a confidence that the agencies that need to know, will know. And that if they need assistance or support, that they can immediately communicate with others. We want to make sure that whether you're in a deep valley or a high mountain top, you have the ability to reach out when there is a need.
The officers that are going to be out there need to be in very dynamic situations. They're, they're finding more complex situations. They're finding they need to work together all the time.
This is a have-to-work because lives are, are in balance and response time is very critical.
I would say in the last few years, I've seen more multi-agency calls than I've ever seen in my career. And it's critical that they have the best technology in the hip to support those kind of operations.
We know that in those moments of sheer panic or great need, that we want to have excellent communication that crosses all sectors and brings the resources to bear as quickly as possible. And that's what the system does.
It's about their safety. It's about the community's safety. It's about the effectiveness of our response. It's about the efficiency of our response. And you can't pick up a newspaper or watch TV without picking up an example of why these sorts of things are important.
The equipment that we have is not supported anymore. So if we're cannibalizing different pieces of the system to keep it up and running, it is running, but it's, it can't go on forever because parts are not available.
It's especially important for first responders going into a difficult situation to have the confidence that their ability to communicate comes with them, which is why we put so much attention to this emergency radio system and why we're thinking today about what we need to be ready tomorrow.
This is a now thing. And this is something that we all need to work together because it's so important. So I pledge to do whatever I can to bring this forward and to bring this to the public, to make them understand why this is necessary in their lives and in the lives of everyone in Marin. And I need you all to pledge to do that, see?
So, the MIRA system is showing signs of aging. And I would like to review a few of the reasons mentioned in the video that is driving the effort to replace the radio system. First, the system is aging and has more users than was anticipated when it was created. Designed in 1998 to accommodate 1,580 mobile radios, which was expected to expand to about 2,500 in 20 years. Today, we have almost 3,000 radios in the system, about 15% more than was planned. And agencies are still seeking to add more radios to the system. And there's approximately 100 talk, digital talk groups within the system that we have. For this reason alone, it is anticipated that we will need to replace the system and have a new system up and running by 2018, which is 20 years from the original design date of the system we have today. These systems are complex. They take years to move from the request to proposal through the vendor selection, detailed design review, permitting, construction, training, testing, and then finally to implementation. Second, the current MIRA system is not compatible with meeting the new federal requirements that go into effect in 2017. And third, federal legislation is already passed that requires us to move from our current frequencies that we have in our system no later than 2021. The future, MIRA's next generation. It will continue the countywide system that, with new radios, 911 dispatch terminals, computer hardware and software, improve capacity and coverage, allow any of our radios in the region to operate seamlessly. and coverage, allow any of our radios in the region to operate seamlessly in all Bay Area communities, comply with the FCC mandates that I just mentioned, including new channels and bandwidth technologies, and be compatible with the federal projects like FirstNet. FirstNet is a project that will support wireless data and non-mission-critical communications for public safety. And this is the slide that doesn't want me to advance. Meeting public expectations. As part of the development of the proposal, a public opinion survey was conducted earlier this year. The poll told us that the public expects effective day-to-day communications, emergency response to disasters, fastest response times possible, reliability and durability in the system. Some of the key points or findings from the poll is there was initial support for a $45 annual parcel tax funding the new county-wide emergency communication system by about 58% of the individuals polled. This is less than the required 2/3. It's necessary. However, it did increase to 64% after a simple explanation of why the measure is being considered and what it would actually fund. Voters have a positive impression of first responders, and they are not overly worried about their ability to provide emergency services. Voters place more value on the new system's ability to maintain reliability over the new technologies than a system would bring us. The most compelling reason to support financing a new system included how the critical communication system is to first responders and the need to upgrade the system to manage the aftermath of a major emergency or a natural disaster. The polling did show that voters wanted to see a lower parcel tax than the $45. As you will see in a moment, MIRA has been able to lower that rate to $29 for a single-family resident, which is believed to gain more support from the public. MIRA will be seeking to do additional polls during June and July of 2014 to provide additional information for a potential ballot measure in November of 2014. MIRA did look at several other funding options and believe the parcel tax, however, is the best way to proceed. An 8-cent sales tax only received 49 support, and a general obligation bond had only 28% support through the poll. They realized that including Citizens Oversight Committee is important. It led to 64% of the voters saying they would more likely support the measure, and voters wanted these funds to be spent on capital purposes such as construction, communication equipment, and towers, not operating purposes like administration salaries and pensions. How did MIRA arrive at the solution? We have a population that demands high-quality emergency response with no excuses. At the same time, the funding has to be reasonable and fair to all communities and users. Based on the poll results, MIRA looked at ways to trim the project budget to meet the voters' willingness to pay for this system. MIRA also recognizes the public desire for the oversight and transparency in the use of these funds. Developing a solution, MIRA began working on a strategic plan back in December of 2010. The strategic plan was based on technology studies as well as extensive review of the MIRA Executive Committee, the MIRA Board of Directors, and the MIRA Committees and Subcommittee. These boards and subcommittees are made up of elected officials throughout the county, public safety chiefs, as well as city managers. So financing the solution. The current MIRA system was purchased using bonds. We are obligated to pay our portion of those annual costs until those bonds are retired in 2020. To minimize the impacts on the local budgets, MIRA has tightly managed the project budget to a minimum, to persuade, and to pursue other means of financing to replace the radio systems that we have. This slide shows the baseline replacement budget for our system. It covers all the way from site development through delivering the mobile and portable radios needed in the field. The price tag on this is $46.3 million. To proceed with the parcel tax, the county of Marin is the legal entity that would place the tax on the ballot. MIRA itself does not have the authority to do so, but once enacted, the parcel proceeds would be collected by the county and then given to MIRA to manage Funding options. Again, the funding requirement is $46.3 million. MIRA has developed a funding plan based on a parcel tax of $29 per single-family residence. That's far less than the $45 taxed used in the poll. MIRA has obtained and will continue to look for grant opportunities to aid in funding the new system, but there's no way that grant funding is going to be able to provide the large amount of dollars that are needed. The parcel tax figures shown are averages for each parcel, while single-family dwellings is a fixed amount. Other rates will depend on the number of units, acreage, et cetera. Commercial industrial properties are also capped at $2,500, and MIRA is currently looking at whether there'd be a senior exemption from the parcel tax. This slide shows a little bit about funding of the current system and also the future system. If we aren't able to pass a parcel tax, the current alternative plan would be to fund the next-generation system as we did the first generation. If you look on this slide and see if this works, this is the first generation. Throughout the county, there's still a $2.35 million annual debt service that needs to be paid on that system. If the new system began being funded in 2015, the second-generation bonds, there would be an additional $3.6 million. Combined, that would be $5.95 million for all the municipalities or all the member agencies for the first five years, and then it would reduce to $3.6 million. To put it in perspective, that for every $1,000 that the town of Fairfax spends today on MIRA, you would need to increase that to $2,500 for the next six years, and then it would reduce to about $1,500. So the new system, even after 2021, is about 50% more expensive than the previous system. The next steps. The action plan. Round one. This is round one presentation. This was an opportunity to outline what is happening and where MIRA is headed. We do encourage feedback. Dave Jeffries is here this evening that would be able to answer any questions you may have this evening that I can't respond to, but even after this meeting, if there's questions, if you get them to me, I can forward them to the MIRA staff. To wrap it up, the goal of MIRA is to continue to improve the 911 and safety communication system reliability for years to come. The cost is a little over $40 million, but can be funded with a $29 a year for a single-family dwelling parcel tax. They want to build on already the strong public support to win the 2/3 passage, and likely to ask voters to pass this parcel tax in November of 2014. And with that, I would have to answer any questions or direct those questions to Dave Jeffries.
Are there questions for other council members? I'd also...
I've got a question.
Hey, Roger. Thanks for the presentation. And, you know, I think Fairfax, right now, the way the system is financed is that each of the member agencies is paying an annual fee to be part of MIRA. And I think for Fairfax, it's, and Michael Viret may have the number, but I think it's about $45,000 a year for MIRA.
Should I have it here somewhere?
This year, for the debt service, we budgeted $39,000 between police and public works, and then I think there was another $11,000 or so that was Fairfax's share of the...
Right. If you include that in your debt service, it was $47,000 this year.
Okay.
That was for the bond section of the...
So the debt service is about $39,000, did you say, and then 11 is operating costs?
No, 11 is your portion of Ross Valley fires.
So this proposal would take the cost for that and take it out of the municipal budget and basically add a line item to our property tax bills, correct?
That's correct, but the current bond does go through 2020.
Okay, so we would continue to pay our share until 2020, at which point the homeowner's property tax line item would pick up the cost of the new system?
Right. So the homeowners would start that parcel tax in 2015.
Okay. So what the, as I was going through it, it said that as this goes forward, that the town would still pay operating costs going forward. So it's not just, you know, it's not just a free ride for the municipality that we would be paying for the operating costs, correct?
That's correct.
So capital costs, homeowners pay for, operating costs municipality makes a contribution, correct?
Yes.
So what my question, what this is leading up to is what would be the operating costs? What is going to happen to that line item in our budget?
And I think I'll direct, have Dave answer that question for you.
We know the operating costs are going to continue because we'll still be doing operating and maintenance with the system. We believe it'll be probably fractionally higher than the current operating costs because it is a more expensive system we're maintaining. One of the things we're doing right now is trying to get Marin, Public Works, to give us their best estimate of what those operating and maintenance costs will be starting five years from now, which is one of the challenges in doing an estimate, is we're asking them to estimate the cost of maintaining a system that we haven't picked a vendor for, we haven't done detailed design review for. So it will be a rough estimate, and that's part of why this is an informational presentation. We're not asking for any action or decision this evening. And when we come back in February, March, April, somewhere in that area, we hope to have this more detailed out with those kind of numbers and estimates. But do please recognize that the challenge in trying to estimate a technology cost five years from now.
And I don't want to make an unfair assumption or ask you for an unfair question. What I was really trying to track down is what is Fairfax paying for operating costs right now? Does anybody have an estimate?
Michael actually has it. It's between, it looks like, $33,000 a year is what we pay toward membership, which is operating.
Is that operating or is that bond cost? That's what I'm trying to think of.
That's the operating cost.
That is operating cost. So it's still a pricey item.
There's still going to be a cost, and actually, looking down the road too, is this, what you saw in here includes funding for four additional radio sites to do some of the infill with some of the coverage areas that have been a concern to us, in addition, including contingencies, as you would for any project this size. This also includes a one-for-one swap of all the field radios that exist right now. And so that's actually one of the places we're able to work on the budget. This new system, we're anticipating being able to handle 5,000 radios, even though we're bumping up to 3,000 now. But reducing the number of purchases down to 3,000 made a huge difference in this. But for your agencies, when we roll to the new system, there would not be that field cost. It would be prudent to put some money aside down the road because the field radios just don't last as long as the mountaintop equipment. That said, the numbers we were originally working with from vendors were, expect a seven-year life for that field equipment. When I'm not here, I'm still a captain up at Navado PD, and we probably, after nine years of service, have over 90% of our radios still working. So we have more than beat that seven-year planning number. We're seeing a much better life expectancy in real-life field use, which is encouraging to us as well. And we're going to be seeing some other changes with the technology. The Generation One system we use now was vendor-specific, was very hardware-driven, and while there's still hardware on any radio system, the feds have forced more common standards to provide opportunity to look at other vendors, and we're seeing the systems become more software-based. And as we know from our home computers, it's a lot easier to upgrade your windows or your office program than it is to update the inside of your box. And so those are all things we see as being encouraging and trying to work on those operating and maintenance costs. And we do try to reuse whatever tower sites and buildings and that kind of core infrastructure that we can as well.
Yeah. I had another question about that, is, you know, our telecommunications ordinance and most of them encourage co-locating, and whether MIRA's looked at co-locating on existing sites?
Right now, we work on a combination of sites. Some were built up by MIRA. Some are co-located on commercial sites, and I know specifically in two cases, were co-located with another government agency, with a couple of sites in Sonoma County, look back into Marin. So we believe we'll be able to use a lot, if not all, of the existing sites to try to bring the next generation up, and the additional sites we're looking at again are to try to fill gaps that we don't cover today anyway. But we're, you know, obviously it's easier for us to co-locate just in terms of land use and all of that that goes on.
Sure.
And it's really the green sites that are a real challenge, even in Generation One, to try to bring up.
Yep. Okay. Thanks a lot.
So my question is, in the event of a major earthquake, will the system work? Typically, it won't, and we need satellites. So maybe I'm wrong, but will it work?
The systems that we use have a lot of different redundancies in them. The current system, and I'll speak to the current system since we haven't done a complete design of the new system, basically has five different zones built into it. So if the connection between the five zones and the entire 101 corridor is one of those zones. Those systems sides can work separately. It's a bigger issue for the county where maybe coastal units can talk to each other but have a challenge getting back to their dispatch center. If those, if the two main sites, the 101 corridor and the West Marin zone break down, then the technology breaks us and puts us in groups to talk on frequencies and try to work around that. So that's the second level of redundancy. And then the radios have built into them more normal frequencies that don't rely on the mountaintops at all, so that we can talk short-range, more like we used to in our older systems. And, you know, having, on the law enforcement side, that's allowed me to do things like conduct surveillance of San Francisco International Airport with my investigators and I, working down there where we couldn't even touch the mountaintops, because we have that ability to work that way in some common channels. You saw in there Sonoma County channels. We've done surveillance in my town with Sonoma County detectives on their channel in Marin.
So do you think ultimately...
So there's a lot of capability built in there. And the new system especially brings in another big feature that we should point out, and that's the federal government has invested in 700 megahertz, the systems we're looking at, and there's currently, through the Urban Area Security Initiative, a group of 700 megahertz frequencies available throughout the Bay Area to support mutual aid and emergency relief. So that's, while separate, it will be in our mobiles and it will be in our portable radios, that separate system that we can go to too if we have issues with our own. So there's a number of redundancies built into this system.
Okay. And one more question. So should we move to this new system? And I guess my understanding is we would still be paying for the old system for another five years. Is there any thoughts to selling off any of the old system? We did that at the Air District and actually were able to consolidate our costs of doing a new radio system that way.
This is one of the questions I've sent back for us to take a look at and be able to respond to where it makes sense. We certainly will try that. So let me hit that in a couple ways. One, it's really 20, we plan to turn the new system on in 2018, so it'll just be a couple of years after that when those bonds expire. It's going to take a while to get this thing up. Depending with the equipment, we would, we hope to reuse what we can in terms of buildings, towers, generators, that sort of thing. With some of our transmission equipment, the challenge we're going to run into is what the chief mentioned earlier in that our equipment's not compatible with the new federal regulations. So it may be that there's folks out there, maybe rural enough, that they might be able to reuse it, in much the same way that our radio shop has their eyes open now for systems like ours today that are already in the process of moving to the new system. So we can try to get some of their equipment as replacements to keep us going till 2018. So that's certainly, where we can, we just as soon sell it off than surplus it.
Yeah, go ahead.
When I, when I support this next year, the argument that I will make to folks when they ask for my opinion is, your public safety is worth the cost of twenty-nine dollars, as Mike Guerin Galley sitting in the back could say. That'd be about pizza and a movie.
I, I think I've heard the term a latte a month as well.
That's a little high, a high end for me. Pizza and a movie, your public safety is worth that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Let me see, I guess, in terms of the co-location idea, I've heard of co, you know, I don't know how much thought you've given to other, you know, one request that I've had repeatedly is, in parts of Fairfax, they don't get any cellphone coverage, for instance. And this is something that is going to be popular, at least with some of the people there, as long as the cell towers are right, close, are not adjacent to somebody's residence. And another thing is, KWMR does, you know, broadcasting, and they would probably also be interested in some sort of footprint. They are not interested really in paying money for it, but I think people are be interested in it. And if you're trying to sell something that's not passing, that might be part of the mix that you could look at.
Yeah, and I believe when we get to that point, we're looking, the infill sites we're looking at are south of here and also West County. So, my understanding, and I haven't heard anything different from your police chief for fire, is that here in the Fairfax area, we're getting decent coverage now. So, I suspect what you'd see here is we'd reuse the existing sites that already have stuff. But certainly, you know, the challenge of having this conversation is always when the vendor and MIRA get down and really do that detailed design review and do the propagation studies and, and figure out, because these towers do have much better range than a cellphone tower, then we will be looking at whatever options we have to do to get the best coverage we can. And certainly, co-locating makes a lot of sense. And, you know, if we build the tower and rent space out, there's a value to MIRA there. If we're able to go in and, and put our equipment in an existing tower, that certainly saves us a lot of that cost and expense and trouble that goes into building a site.
Sure, I understand that, but I'm also thinking about your PR in terms, and basically, you've got to sell this to two-thirds of the people plus. And if they're getting something out of it besides, you know, this federally mandated system, which frankly is what's driving, you know, that's going to drive this in some form or another. But if you're trying to pass a ballot measure, you need the ammo that you can get, and people are going to look to more than, you know, having the most efficient police and fire response. And the things that make a difference in everyday lives that I've heard about is the fact that they can't, you know, get cell coverage. I mean, you know, some people like that, but some people don't. Sounds like the wind's coming in. Acorns.
And I'm certainly happy to pass that along, you know, that this, the whole cellular technology infrastructure is really a different animal than the MIRA project, but I certainly will pass that along to our boards.
Yeah, thank you. And since basically you're here to get input from the public, is anybody from the public have any thoughts on this that you could, that you're interested in making? Thanks.
Do you have it open for the public?
Yes, that's, yeah, I didn't say the words, but yes, this is open public comment.
Frank Agar, thirteen minute away. When, when the county bought the MIRA system, it was obsolete when it was purchased. A committee of four council members in Marin County, Paul Chiganel, who was a high-ranking San Francisco police official, Mark Janowski from Tiburon, a coordinator, a council member, and myself, sat on the committee for the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members, and we studied the MIRA system. We came to the conclusion that it was obsolete. We came to the conclusion that Motorola was selling us an off-the-shelf system they could sell to no one else. We objected to the purchase. A number of local police chiefs objected to the purchase, to joining MIRA. So, we got nine years out of it. We spent at least twenty-two million, and we're still paying for it. We got nine years out of it. And it's, I guess it's, we're realizing it's obsolete today. It was obsolete when we bought it. You know, they're talking about a, a new system. There's a concern about antenna systems and locating them on firehouses. They're posing EMF risks for firefighters who sleep in those firehouses overnight. And I think you need to run by the, the fire union exactly what's going to be proposed for antennas in and around our firehouse. I urge you to look very closely and, and get an independent study as to, as to the needs of our communities. So, CHP and California Highway Patrol and CAL FIRE can't communicate, don't, they don't have a MIRA system, they can't communicate on MIRA. So, I, I would just, you know, recommend that, that you really take a, a real close look at this operation before you jump on board and say, oh, yes, let's go ahead and spend the money, you know. I, I know public safety is like motherhood and apple pie, but, but we have to be smart about how we spend our money. And thank you very much. Stephen Vanny, 104 Chester Avenue. I was one of the first board members of MIRA. We started in nineteen ninety-six, and this council, other than Frank at the time, was very much in favor of this. Their study of the Motorola system, they had no technology background, none of the board members that he's talking about. So, we, we dismissed their findings. We found that this was, after the Inverness Fire, was one of the most important things that we could do for public safety. So, I would encourage you to look towards, yes, the funding is going to cost us, but how can you possibly put a price on what we've seen happen just this year in, in these fires and people losing lives? When the Oakland fires happened, I believe Ron Zicy was our chief of, our fire chief at the time. The Oakland Hills Fire started, and one of the issues was the narrowness of the roads and the amount of fire, burnable fire that was in the hills in Oakland. They had thirty tons per acre. We have sixty tons per acre. Their small roads were the size of Sir Francis Drake. So, we really need to look at this and keep something like this going. Very, very important. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nobody else from the public, then I'll close the public comment section of this item. And if there's no further comment from here, I'd say thank you very much. And move on to the next agenda item. Well, our, our next agenda item is another report from Marin Sanitary, their quarterly report. I'm also curious, I'm, I'm realizing that there's open time for public expression, it's often scheduled early in here, and we have an approval of this agenda the way it is, but are there many people here for public expression? How many? Like, five? Can I?
I'd like to move that we open to, open time and then come back to the Marin Sanitary agenda item.
Do I? Okay, it looks like we have a motion. God, it is two seconds actually from Bragman and Weinsa. I'm not sure who said it first. So, at that point, we could move open time for public expression up to this point now and have the following to, the reports after that. So, if you would, now is the time for public expression. If you wish to address the council, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Individuals have three minutes to speak, five minutes if you're representing a group. This is the time set aside for individuals wishing to express the council on matters not listed on the agenda. State law, Government Code Section 54954 dot two provides that council is not permitted to take action and strictly limits the right of council to discuss any un-agendized item unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So, it's open time for public expression, and if you would like to, please come up to the podium and state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Bob Stempel. I live on forty-two Portius, and I'd like to talk, I'd like to address the issue of the excess noise coming from events at Deer Park Villa. I've lived in, at my address for twenty-eight years, and although Deer Park Villa has been there many, many years, longer than that, I can attest to the fact that has been a noise, a source of noise complaints for three generations. But what I'd like to talk about is specifically what's happening lately under the new management. I think the situation's gotten a lot worse. Things have changed. For one thing, they're open seven days a week rather than five. Another thing, it seems that there are more events, multiple, several events during the day, up to three. If I'm not mistaken, last weekend, there were three events entailing music outdoors on the same day. But much more importantly, the events seem to have gotten much louder. In September, they've gotten so loud that there was even one case where there was a sound check made and there was a decimal reading of sixty-nine, when the legal threshold is fifty-five, which is pretty absurd as far as, as far as I see it. Another issue too is there is a, which I don't remember ever being a problem before, is that of speakers. By speakers, I mean people who speak on the microphone, DJs particularly, sometimes members of a wedding party. There have been cases where the DJs are at a volume that is disproportionate to the actual music level, and they're the ones in control of the volume of the music. You would think that this would be a simple, a simple solution. I mean, I'm not a sound technician, sound engineer, but my understanding is that you can just turn a dial and, and lower the volume, but that doesn't seem to be the case here. It's gotten to be much more complex. I think the reason why, first, the first, the main reason is that when you call Deer Park Villa to ask them to turn the music down, they don't. Good example was that particular party where the music got to sixty-nine decibels. I know my wife called about an hour and a half before that reading, requesting that they lower the music. They said, oh, sure, of course we will. I talked to another neighbor who said that she called three times that same evening, asking for them to lower the music, and each case they say they will. It continued up to sixty-nine decibels. Another problem is that if you or I were to have a party and somebody were to call us, I think that we would probably, and call us and say the music was loud, we would turn it down. If we chose not to, then they would probably call the police and we would get a knock on the door. That doesn't happen in the case of Deer Park Villa. There's a special protocol in place where the, apparently, the police officers are not allowed to go on the premises. There's a complaint. Even if Deer Park is issued a citation, the officers will not hand it in, in person. The owner is able to, to sign a citation at the police station the following day. That seems to be preferential treatment. Don't understand why, why it's happening. I'm over three minutes, but there was a person here would, who would be willing to yield for three minutes if that's okay. I just wanted to say that I have a petition here, signed by thirty-six people in the Deer Park area, representing thirty-four addresses, asking that the town council do something about this. There's, in many cases, there's a sense of outrage. I hear expressions like, this is ridiculous, this is absurd, why doesn't the town do something about this? That's why I'm here, I'm asking you to do something about this. I request, or a court, the petition which I'll give you, that people have signed merely says, asks that you look into the extent to which this is a problem, meaning doing a police incident report. I request that be a time period that covers at least the summer, if not the entire calendar year, to see to what extent this is a serious problem. And also, that would you, that you would look into ways of perhaps altering use permits or some other measures that are available to you. I don't know how this works. That could perhaps mitigate the problem. Also, it requested the council look into ways in which the police department's response could be different. I think one of the main problems that we have here comes down to the fact that Deer Park Villa doesn't seem to be willing to do anything about the problem itself. And then, when a neighbor complains, there's no, the, the, the police have their hands tied. The only reason, the only recourse left to a, a neighbor who merely wants peace and quiet is that he has to do a citizen's arrest. Now, this is somebody who merely wants to be able to enjoy a movie on TV or maybe in his yard, and he has to go through this cumbersome process. First of all, he has to put up with the loud music. Secondly, he has to go through the process of calling the police, waiting for them to come over, take a sound reading to get the evidence, and then that same, the same person who merely wanted peace and quiet has to appear in court. All the while, Deer Park Villa is able to continue playing loud music. In the case of the citation, which I, there was a pending citation against Deer Park Villa, a date hasn't even been set by the courts. And the music continues, continues, continues. We continue to call, ask them to turn the music down, nothing happens. Doesn't help calling the police because we know that they're not allowed to go on the grounds of Deer Park Villa. So, I would like you to look into that last matter. I'd like you to see what you can do to mitigate the problem, and of course, do an incident report to see whether it's just me and thirty-six other crazy people or whether or not this is a really widespread issue. And then I have some other people here who I believe would like to talk to. Who should I give the petition to?
Thank you. Please give it to the town clerk here, and we'll consider you representing a group. I'd like to, so that's five minutes in the, we'll call that five minutes, so. But if you, if your speakers can keep it to three minutes, that'd be great.
Hi, Diane Hoffman, thirty-three Portius. And I've lived here, maybe on Portius, twenty-three years. And, for example, when I sold the house across the street from me, it's a disclosure item that you're in Deer Park and they make music and they have parties. And what my client said was, you know, it's, and we all know, we all listen to the music, it's a wonderful place, and if it's not too loud, it's okay. And it hasn't really been much of a problem. When my client sold her house, she said, you know, after living there fifteen years, you know, two or three times she called up, it was Debbie, I guess who was managing the place, and she'd tell her, they turned the music down, and that's the end of the problem. But apparently, in the last year or so, things have really changed, and it has turned into a problem. And it's, it's not like we're a bunch of new people in the neighborhood and we're not used to it. So, I called the police department today because I, I heard this situation with my neighbor, and it just seemed very strange to me. I mean, if there's loud noise, you, you call the police, they go, if there's a big party to the house, and the people turn down the music, that's the typical way. But I heard from my neighbor, that's not how it works. And what the sergeant told me is there was a meeting with, with you and the police chief and Mike, and they arranged this setup that if someone, first neighbors would call Deer Park Villa, but apparently, that's not working. So, then if the neighbor calls the police department, the police department comes to the person's house, takes a bunch of readings, and if it's too loud, then the police officer calls Mike. And, you know, Mike could be there or Mike could not be there, and then they depend on Mike to call Deer Park Villa to turn the music down. And that system's not working. And I think if you're going to have a meeting about how to handle it, at the meeting, you should have someone who lives in the neighborhood.
Hi, I'm Allison Mulliken, I live at sixty Portius, and I have been experiencing similar issues with Deer Park Villa. We have lived in that, on that property for five years. When we first moved there, my husband and I had a young child, year and a half, two years, and it really wasn't that big a deal. We did occasionally have a loud night where we would call and we felt like there was a reasonable response. In the past year, or about the past year to year and a half, we have not been experiencing that kind of effectiveness. When we call Deer Park Villa, we get a, yes, we can turn it down, sure, we'll tell the DJ, but there is no lowering of the volume. So, it, it feels like nothing is happening, like we don't have any traction with the, the people who are in control of the volume. I myself have not called the police, ever. I've tried to avoid that, I've tried to be very neighborly about it. I do enjoy the sound of people enjoying themselves. We, you know, initially have really enjoyed them as neighbors, but it does seem like this is, you know, has changed. I understand the business has come under new ownership. I'm not sure if that has something to do with it, but I can say I've had this experience too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, council. I'm Tom Boss with the Marin County Bicycle Coalition. Our offices are at 733 Center Boulevard. I'm just here tonight to, to invite all of you, to invite staff and, and to invite the, the public to Biketoberfest, our big bicycle festival here in town that happens next Saturday, October 12th. It's an all-day event from 11:00 to 6:00 p.m. and has a lot of great things happening. We have over 70 exhibitors showing all kinds of unique bikes and accessories and ways to reduce your car trips and, and make some of those with a healthier alternative, alternative of the bicycle. And exhibitors include, the Chamber of Commerce will be there, the folks that are creating the new Marin Museum of Bicycling will have a booth, as well as the Drake High School team, which a lot of our Fairfax high school kids are part of. We also have some great music. Fairfax is a great, a great lover of music, and we have Moon Alice, Tom Finch Group, Tiny Television, and what I'm looking forward to is a pedal, pedal-driven performance by Cradle Duente, where participants from the crowd can actually get up on a bicycle and pedal and help power the, the sound equipment for their, for their performance. There will also be a cargo bike jubilee, which will include a workshop on how to go car light. That is how to go from a two-car family to a one-car family using a cargo bike to get your stuff to and from your house. And lastly, I wanted to point out, we got a great bit of press, the town and our event in the San Francisco Chronicle, they have a section called the Biking About Town, and this week features our event. And actually, Councilwoman Renee Goddard, there's a photo of her on the, on the SF Gate website, you might want to check that out. So anyways, I encourage everybody to come out next Saturday. It's at, it's at the Fairfax, or excuse me, the Fair and Selma Plaza down there on Center Boulevard, and we welcome you all. Thanks.
My name is Mark Thompson. I've lived in Marin since 1956. I've been working in Fairfax as the manager at Deer Park Villa for approximately six months or a little bit longer. And to speak in regards to the, to the, to the music, I have been managing there, working five nights a week, and I take most of those phone calls, and I react to each and every one of those phone calls. I will admit, approximately one week ago, a particular DJ that was hired by a friend of the bride, who had an exceptionally large ego, would not listen to anything that I said, and I know each time that I walked away, the volume went right back up. And I know that he had nothing but attitude. So I apologize about that. It was something I would have corrected. It has been corrected. There's a kill switch that's been installed. So if that incident should repeat itself, I will hit a switch and the music will stop. The wedding bride will have signed a document understanding that the level of the music has to be maintained within what the law is. I have a DB meter. I walk around the perimeter of the property and I look at that reading every time I get a phone call. Quite often, we're not in violation of that particular law, as far as what the DB reader is meeting at that location. The microphone, granted, when a DJ speaks about the dance, the bride coming out, it is loud and it is excessive for a couple of minutes. That's somewhat uncontrollable on my end, and that will probably always go on at weddings because it happens. But I am very proactive about keeping peace and harmony within the neighborhood. I am new to Deer Park Villa, but it is, it's, it's, what I do is to try and have peace and harmony. So moving forward with these things in place, we're also just recently installed what we're considering as a house DJ, so that we are referring that to our clients, a DJ that knows how to play the scope of the property. And that's pretty much all I have to say in regards to that. And the, the one home that this gentleman spoke on, Mr. Stemplton, that's now that I know where that home is, I have taken a reading at that location. It doesn't even have a fence. It's open-air wire fence. So perhaps we can do something there and maybe build a fence or a partition that would muffle that sound a little bit as opposed to it just carrying through, because his property's extremely close to the Deer Park property. As a matter of fact, it borders that property. And knowing that Deer Park has been there for 92 years pulling on events, my goal is to increase business at Deer Park, so yes, there might be more music, but I still, it is my intent to work with the community and keep it within peace and harmony. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Mike Guerin-Gelly. Born and raised in Fairfax, now live in Novato. About a year and a half ago or so, the family asked me to come over back to Deer Park to take over the family business and keep it sustainable, keep it going. We've doubled business since I've been back there. It's still a lot, a long ways away from when it, it was a sustainable business, as far as the amount of volume that we, we, we need to do to stay in business. What Mark might have not mentioned to you today was that he carries a sound meter on him, and the average sound of this meeting is 65 decibels, just so you know, you get a good idea what's going on just in this meeting. When, and, and, well, let me start off, before I go further, about, I guess, defending ourselves a little bit. I do invite a nice meeting with all the neighbors in the neighborhood who can come over to Deer Park. I can assure them that we take this very seriously. We have for, you know, a long, long time. It's not under new ownership. I've been, I was born and raised there, so I understand the problem. And so, there's a couple of things. One is, is that the decibel levels, so, wait, so what I want to say is that we want to get along. We can come up with ways and ideas, and we could sit at the table with our neighbors. They can maybe better understand Deer Park's history and what it takes to make that place go, and we can better understand what their needs and concerns are. Certainly, one of my goals is to get a more solid fence up between ourselves and the neighbors, because I think that will help buff, buffer it. But we also live in a little bit different world today. The general plan, which you guys alluded to earlier tonight, has been updated on the noise element. And in every, just a car driving by your house reads 64 decibels. We're supposed to stay 55 or under, and that's for, you know, with, with, with parties. In the case of our neighbors on Portius, or any neighbor, they could take the, the readings right on the property line. So that means you, you could, you take the reading on the property line, it'd be, it'd be like if you, just, I told you this was 65, but imagine if you were, it was 65, this was the property line, and you were inside your house. How, are you really, I, I don't know. I, I haven't experienced listening to it from inside their house or the yard, but I have experienced it from every single part of Deer Park Villa and, and there. So we're very, very concerned. We walk the property on every party. We try to keep it within the limits. Just to wrap it up, we do want to get along. We, we welcome a sit-down meeting right now. In 92 years, we've never been convicted of this crime. And as far as the arrangement goes with the police department, it's very detrimental to our business for police officers to be pulling into our parking lot when parties are, are going on. This, these aren't, believe me, you hear how loud this is? This is louder than we're allowed to be. And it's just, it does, it's actually not even fair. And the new general plan actually will raise the decibel level, and everyone should know that. But that doesn't mean we don't want to get along. We do. I don't want to raise our decibel level. I just want to try to get along with people and, at the same time, stay in business. The one party that was, as an example of what happens, we had a party earlier that day, the day that I got the citizen's arrest put on me. And in the report, the police report, it says that they were yelling and shouting at the party. Well, this party was attended by about, I don't know, 60 people that were, average age was 80 years old. And I don't, I'm not so sure if they were yelling or if they're just hard of hearing, because I just don't know what to do. We're just trying to run a business. But if, if the folks here want to sit down with us, if someone wants, in the town wants to mediate it, I'd be happy to do it. I would like to hopefully have this $500 ticket that I'm faced with on court thrown out, but if it does happen to go to court and I have to defend myself, I will. But 92 years, we've had a pretty good record there at Deer Park Villa, and the alternative isn't that great. It could get developed, it can get all kinds of things. It's one of the, one of the few properties in Fairfax that's the same today as it was in 1922, and I'm pretty proud of that. Thank you.
Are you going to speak to this issue?
No, I'm not.
Can I just take a moment? Garrett, following Diane's recommendation, apparently Mike finds that that's a good idea too. Can you gather the appropriate town folks and chair this mediation and, and community discussion, because this is only heading toward a train wreck.
Right. Actually, I was going to wait till the end of public comment to provide staff comments on the comments made and what we discussed with the property owner and some solutions. So I could either do that now, I could wait till the end of public comment.
It might be better to wait till the end of the public comment. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kim Terrell. I live at 79 Spruce Road. Last August, I came to a really tough decision and decided to file a complaint against my neighbor in a non-permitted unit who lives directly across from me. After being notified by the building department, the property owners expressed a desire to legalize this unit. And the building department has worked long and hard to work with them and make this work. They've set many deadlines for this property owner to meet, you know, to submit their required paperwork. To my knowledge, the property owner has not met one single deadline in 14 months. And not only that, he has had three tenants in that non-permitted unit. I am asking you, the town council, to please help me on this. I'm asking you to direct the building department to begin nuisance abatement procedures, as well as other issues that are going on with this property, which include a home business that involves drumming, drum building, and teaching classes at times. Sometimes these classes are eight weeks long, two days a week, for two hours. The other issue is garbage that is put out sometimes two, three, four days before garbage night, right at the street, which is directly across from my home. I see it as I come and go. The garbage ultimately ends up strewn throughout the yard, throughout the street because of raccoons and birds. If there's not room in the cans, the garbage is often set right next to the cans on the street. With the non-permitted unit and this business come parking problems. Very, very limited parking on the street. It's a very narrow street. I've come home often with vehicles parked across from my car or across from my garage, and cars can barely get through and sometimes not get through at all. The other issue is a large hole in his front yard. It has something to do with drainage. The hole is quite large, and when it rains really heavily, the water comes up, it goes across his property, then kicks back out into the street, throws a lot of debris and rocks back out into the street, and works its way down the street. I don't know in terms of if it is detrimental to the properties below him, this property, because it is on the downhill side from me, but I believe it is a safety issue for any children that want to puddle jump and not realize that that puddle is two feet deep. Like I said, I have lived with this for many years. I would really like to see a resolution. This is something I see on a daily basis, and it impacts my life with the noise from the home business, the parking from the home business and the tenants, and the garbage, just a visual ugliness. I have pictures here, I have a half dozen pictures, if I could, I don't know if I can submit them just to the building department.
Please give them the, yeah.
Just a small representation of what I live with every day, of the garbage, the drainage, the parking, and the drumming business. So I would appreciate any help and your consideration on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Garrett will be talking on this one after we're finished.
Yes, sir.
Can we see the photos, please? Beginning to pine for the conversation about library week.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Louis Vaccaro, 57 Manor Road. There's been like a recent add-on to the streets around Fairfax. I'm sure everyone's noticed. There are giant green bicycle arrows, and I'm all for like, safe routes to school and having kids be safe and everything, but I honestly think these are ridic, a little over-excessive. I mean, from my driveway, I can see six of them, and they're just giant ugly green arrows. And I think that maybe we should reconsider it and maybe take a few away and have one a block. I mean, they are just really over-excessive and all over Fairfax, and I just really think they're god-awful, I mean, and ugly. And I'm sure everyone's seen them, they're adding on, but, I mean, I'm fine with them maybe like every once in a while, but they're really just all over the place, and it kind of makes our town look like a checkerboard.
Thanks. Are there any more public comments? If not, then I'll close the public comment period. And Garrett, do you want to address some of the issues that come up?
Sure. Actually, Councilmember Winesoff had, had indicated to us there was some concern with the noise at Deer Park Villa, but maybe just a little background maybe for the general public in terms of protocols. The police chief isn't here. He's out of town, but what he can do is next November also chime in and provide a little more update. But in general, when it comes to Deer Park, yes, PD, they'll take the phone call. If it's an anonymous complaint, then they'll just call Deer Park and ask them to turn it down. If the resident wants, they'll go out and take a meter reading. If the meter reading exceeds the levels, then they'll ask the resident if they wish to sign the, I call it a complaint, citizen arrest. If they do, then they'll go in site. And yes, there's kind of this unofficial process in which we just call Deer Park, tell them to turn down the volume, then tell Mike to come in and sign the citation. And that's an unofficial protocol that we've worked out. But that being said, it's true, the chief and I did meet with Mike when he had to go over his citation, indicate the concerns of the neighborhood. We suggested to Mike that he reach out to the neighborhood, which he has volunteered, and we indicated that we're more than happy to try to facilitate a meeting between the residents and Deer Park to try to see if we can come up with a solution. I think the difficulty will be Deer Park is a restaurant. Mike has indicated he is trying to grow the business. When you grow the business and you have a bank facility, you will have sound. The residents obviously are, I understand their concerns. Obviously, there is going to be noise, and it's something that we'll try to figure out. With regard to the general plan element, it is true, the general plan element has a noise element that was updated. It has analysis for ambient noise, just ambient noise, if you're not doing anything. And around Cascade, just north of Cascade and Bolinas, I think the average reading of DBA was 64, which obviously is higher than the 55 standard that we have currently. And so you just have some inconsistencies, and that's something as we go through the town code and update noise element, we're going to have to explore. But that being said, I think the first thing makes sense is we should go ahead and facilitate a meeting and see if we could come up with some solutions to try to address their concerns. I think Mike is, is open to trying to work with the residents and come up with different solutions. As a staff, obviously, we like to see people come up with a reasonable solution. And what we like to do is do that meeting, and then we can report back to council how well that's going. It'd be similar to the process with the Good Earth in terms of reporting back. I, I don't know if we'll come up with something that works for everybody, but I think the first step is to talk, make sure we understand where everybody's coming from, and maybe just those little steps that Mike can implement as a business may be able to address some of the concerns. I think some of the things Mike did talk about could have an impact, whether it's fencing or some way the, balance the sound. I think a house DJ, as the manager indicated, is a good first step. But again, we're, we're trying to work through these issues. So I think that covers it as it relates to Deer Park and the noise issue.
Wait, will you bring this back in the manager's report?
Yeah. Well, I think what I like is a little flexibility, either bring back in the manager's report, or if we need to, we'll, we'll schedule as a council discussion item. But I'm hopeful we could just bring it back as a, as a manager's report about the actions taken, see if that works, and then try to work through the issues. So that'd be my, my suggested process that we're going to undertake. And then, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I think, you know, just speaking to that, I think it's, it's really important to involve everybody in a conversation. Following, you know, the pattern with the Good Earth, you know, as imperfect as it is, basically, when people feel like they're being heard and there's attempts being made on all sides...
when people feel like they're being heard and there's attempts being made on all sides, to get to the crux of it and what specific steps will make sense to lower the problems. I mean, because obviously, everybody's got to coexist, and, you know, hopefully happily. And so I think if, you know, there's ongoing conversation, that will also help a lot. I mean, decibels are, you know, readings are one thing, but, you know, really getting to the crux of it, you know, maybe it's rearranging where the speakers are or something like that. You know, it can, it's good to try to think out of the box and try to solve it so everybody can live together.
And then the one other item is, I don't think I'll ask our building official to comment on the, on, I think it's 76 Spruce.
Yeah, 76 Spruce. I was involved in the first inspection where I went in with Linda Neal, and we did confirm that there is an illegal second unit there. From then on, Linda has been handling the process and sending the letters. It is true that each deadline that has come up has just gone by, and he's had a lot of different excuses. He's been out of town, or the cost of the survey is too high. You know, we recommended to him that he at least clean up the property so it isn't such a eyesore to the neighborhood, but that hasn't been done. It's remained the same for over a year, so that's pretty much where it's at. Well, you could direct it, direct us to bring it to council for an abatement hearing.
I don't, can I, I look at you for direction, council?
You can give general direction to... I'm sorry. You can give general direction to staff to bring it up for a future agenda item.
Sounds, direction to staff, yeah, I think that that would be appropriate. I mean, it's... Either that or issue a citation, so.
I would be careful with the council directing a citation be issued as you will need to be hearing any nuisance abatement action. So if you want to direct staff to bring it back for an update or bring it back for action, you can do that.
That sounds like what we need to do, then.
And it seems to be our monthly practice that usually when we send these things out and Mark has a firm conversation with folks, they seem to catch religion fairly fast.
Okay. Sounds good. So we'll bring it back.
On the regular agenda?
Yeah. On the regular agenda, next.
Not for a status update, but as, or, okay.
Well, you know, it depends. I mean, if we're directing staff to talk to them, we'll go there.
In the absence of the manager being in the room in a moment, I think what I heard you say is, "Schedule this as an agenda item to consider nuisance abatement action."
Well, depending on what the conversation... I'll leave it to council.
Yeah, we'll just, let's bring it back for a future agenda item. We'll discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I guess Garrett's out of the room. Why did I move it to council reports and comments here? Do you want to do the reports and presentations? Do we want to take a five-minute break? Oh, you're right. We skipped those by. I'm happy to start with Marin Sanitary Quarterly Report. You want to take a five-minute? Yeah, just thinking we've been sitting here for a couple hours. Okay. You know, bathroom break is a bathroom break. Okay. Let's try to make it five minutes. Thank you. Great. We have everybody back. Yes, so, thank you. There's also been a request to, there was, we were talking about there were some other items up for continuation, and it was brought to my attention that number 12 is probably...
Yes.
Garrett? Number 12, is that up for continuation? That's the staff recommendation is to continue that item?
Right. The staff recommendations, we continue that item. There was a, we received a council referral for the use permit regarding the item, and since the items are somewhat tangentially related, made sense that in November, you consider everything together. Now, that being said, if there are members of the public that cannot make it to the November 6th meeting, which is the next council meeting, then as a courtesy, the council may want to consider opening the public hearing, allowing those individuals who cannot make it in November to put their comments in the public record now, and then continue it to November, and then continue the discussion. And the applicant is here. Oh, okay. So what I think I would do is, I didn't have a chance to talk to the applicant, so I believe the planning director indicates the applicant is here and provide a little clarification to that.
And has the traffic consultant performed their traffic analysis here? So if we're going to continue it, it would behoove us to get on with releasing her from the clock right now.
That makes sense. I mean, if we continue it now, but if there are people that want to speak to that...
You might, you might take a show of hands.
We might. Is there anybody that wants to speak to item number 12 in this audience here? Raise your hand if you want to speak to that item number 12 at this time, or if you can't. Yes? Is this legal?
Okay, what you need to do, if you're going to take comments now, you might ask the individual if they can come back at the November meeting, and if not, you can take their comments now, but you'll need to have a brief staff report, open the public hearing, take comments, and then continue it. So it would be better if you could come back in November, but if you're absolutely not able to, we can take your comments down.
Okay, well, in that case, if you could, that'd be great.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Clean up a messy situation. Okay, thank you.
Right, so what you're going to do is, right now, what you would do is, in terms of the agenda, you obviously would, you'd be moving up that item and indicating that you're going to continue it, public hearing, and the item to November.
November 6th.
November 6th hearing. Date certain.
Well, I would entertain a motion to do that. Okay, so we have a motion, Winesoff, Second Bragman, to continue item number 12, including the public hearing and all the different aspects of it all consolidated on the next meeting in November 6th.
November 6th.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that is unanimous. And thank you, and apologies for the, wait until now. But it all became apparent, so it's good to deal with it now. So if we wind back then to item number three, the Marin Sanitary Quarterly Report. Take it away.
Thank you. I'm Kim Shibley with Marin Sanitary Service, and I will be presenting the results from the second quarter report to the town on basically their diversion services. So this report was from April through June. Every quarter, we report on some services that are requested by the town in the franchise agreement. So we report May 1st for January through March, August 1st through April through June. The next report will be November 1st, and then the fourth quarter and the annual will be submitted on February 1st. So basically, this slide shows that the, at the end of 2012, the residential diversion rate was at 59 percent. So in the last six months, the diversion rate has increased to 63 percent. So the town has actually increased 4 percent, which is a really good bump up for four, six months. The commercial rate diversion is still 77 percent. I can't drive these things, which is about the same as it was at the last quarter report. And the overall diversion, 66, which is up 2 percent from the end of 2012. So this, this is the participation rate in the Household Hazardous Waste Program. So these are curbside, I mean, these are the drop-off facility numbers. So there were 381 people from the town of Fairfax who participated in the drop-off program. That means they brought in paints, batteries, bulbs, electronic waste, pesticides, think other chemicals into the facility. We had, the town had one small quantity generator use the facility and three curbside participants. This was the first annual Take Back Day, which is a requirement of the franchise agreement to increase diversion for all kinds of materials. This event was primarily a success due to the partnership with Sustainable Fairfax. We had meetings discussing what we wanted to do, but really, all the behind-the-scenes work was done by Sustainable Fairfax, and we showed up with our hazardous waste crew and some of the commercial recycling coordinators, and threw together this amazing event that actually diverted, 7,568 pounds were collected, 7,488 pounds of materials were diverted for a diversion rate of 99 percent. The other thing, and I apologize in the report, I gave credit to the Sheriff's Department, it was actually the Police Department, who collected the pharmaceuticals. So this is the breakdown. Primarily, it was paper shredding and electronic waste, but, and 1 percent was prescription drugs, 1 percent was garbage, less than 1 percent, actually. Another requirement of the agreement is that we report on the market values of some of the primary commodities that are diverted. This is paper, plastic, and aluminum. The trends, paper is around between $150 and $200 per ton. Plastics, this is primarily due to number ones, PETs, and number twos, HDPEs, not the other lesser-valued plastics, three-through-sevens. So most of this, this per ton is based on those high-value materials, which is the majority of the materials collected, and that's anywhere between $300, $325 a ton. We're expecting next quarter to see some dramatic changes in the plastics. Aluminum is valuable. As you can see, it's around the $1,500 per ton range. Garbage service levels, they're pretty stable in the town. Most people have 32-gallon cans. We're hoping more people will switch to 20. We've had a 3 percent, I keep saying "we", the town, has had a 3 percent increase in 20-gallon containers. The 96-gallon is staying the same. We did, Marin Sanitary contacted the residents who have the 96-gallon containers and just checked in to see, do you still need it? Are you really using it? Could you switch? None of them could, so that effort was made, and we're hoping that this trend will continue. More people will require less and less garbage service. AB 341 is mandatory commercial recycling. This is not a requirement of the franchise agreement that we report on this. I've decided to include it because it is part of the bigger diversion goals, and now there will be an ordinance soon in the town. There are 125 commercial accounts on record with Marin Sanitary Service. 26 percent of them are, I mean, 26 of them are apartment buildings, 99 percent of them, no, sorry, 99 of them are commercial businesses, which includes schools. At the time of this report, there were three, two commercial businesses and one apartment building that was not in compliance with the state law, which says apartment buildings with five or more units have to have recycling services of some sort. If you are a business that generates four or more cubic yards of garbage, you have to have some sort of recycling service. It doesn't say you have to maximally divert all materials. It just says you have to have a service. At this time, now, there are zero. Everyone's in compliance. So that still leaves 19 or 20, I think we've actually recoded, and there are a few more low 20s that aren't required by state law to recycle, but are not recycling in the town. And that's the next group that we're going to go after. So we have an action plan with the town. I'm sorry, I apologize, this is so small. But this is just to help notify the town of how the businesses are doing, the effort that Marin Sanitary makes to get everybody compliant. We call each customer, then we send them letters, then we call them again, then we have a, we knock on the door with a packet of information, and then after six months, if we're, or 90 days, if we are still not getting anybody to listen to us, we're going to contact the town and say, "Hey, do you think you could put it on your letterhead this time?", and maybe that will get opened. And that's basically it. So the, as I said, the annual report is much more comprehensive and has a lot more detail on all the diversion activities, and that will be February 1st.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Kim, I just wanted to clarify, did you say 20? I think originally, we were talking about 17 businesses who are not in compliance?
Yes.
And now the 20, just clarify that, please.
We are refining our tracking systems, our database, basically, at Marin Sanitary System. And as businesses move in and out, that number changes. It'll go up and down. And I believe when we talked to the town, we were at 21 that aren't required by state law, but would be required under the, if the ordinance goes through. Yeah.
And what sort of businesses are they?
There's a variety. Some are restaurants, some are retail, some are bike stores.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, I wonder how, you know, whether they reach some threshold of how much recycling they...
Well, actually, we've also done comprehensive audits of 79 of the 99 businesses, and we have a detailed analysis that'll go into the next quarterly report showing who still has recyclables in their garbage. And we're actually sending letters, we will be sending letters to the businesses saying, "Hey, you know, you can do a little bit more. We found cardboard in your garbage", or "We found bottles and cans in your garbage", and so we're trying to do everything we can to move all the divertable resources out of that landfill container and into the right stream.
Yeah, I guess the difference between 79 and 99 is 20, and that's the number of businesses that you don't have recycling, so I wonder if that's...
Exactly.
Whether that approach is really...
I think that was, the auditor reached his threshold that day.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Sure.
Is there any comment from the public on this presentation? Okay, seeing none, I'll close that. And thank you very much, I guess. And next on the agenda is Friends of the Library, proclamation declaring Friends of the Library Week in Fairfax, Margaret Miles. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Margaret Miles. I'm the branch manager of the Fairfax Library, and I'm here to request that you approve the resolution acknowledging Friends of the Library and Friends of Library Week, which is October 20th through 26th. Over the past 10 years... Can you see that? If I put that there. There you go. Over the past 10 years, Fairfax Friends of the Library has purchased more than $40,000 in furniture and materials for the library, and some of the items you can see on this bulletin board. We've got a new table outside, right here, where patrons can sit and use our wireless when we're closed and when we're open. We've got shades on our bay windows, which is making it a lot more comfortable for people to sit there in the afternoons when the sun comes pouring in those windows and the temperature goes up about 20 degrees, so, and it takes the glare off their laptops. We have a lot of people still reading books in our library. Last year, we checked out more books than any year ever in Marin County. In addition, Friends pays for a majority of the programs we hold at the library. We just completed a very successful summer reading program. We had 352 children who signed up in Fairfax. I think that's almost all of them. Children who read during the summer helped maintain their reading skills while earning prizes, paid for by Friends of the Library. And I brought Rodney Rabbit with me as an example of the kind of items that have been purchased to use for children's programs. We have an extremely successful program called Mother Goose on the Loose. That's every Thursday morning. And if you think people aren't using libraries anymore, come to our library at noon and see the 50-plus people that come every week to this program pouring out of the doors. Or maybe you'd rather come at a time when it's a little quieter. During Friends of Library Week, we'll be putting balloons on all the items that Friends have purchased in the past years, and we're going to encourage everyone who hasn't yet joined Friends of the Library to sign up and become a member. And I brought some little forms with me, because you couldn't say no to Rodney. And I brought some little forms with me, because you couldn't say no to Rodney Rabbit, could you? Membership and our ongoing book sale are the primary funding sources that keep the Friends going. So I'm going to leave some membership forms here with you, and I hope you will approve the resolution. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
That was three minutes, wasn't it? I could have been public.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation and thank Ms. Miles for sitting so long and doing a great presentation.
I'll second.
Okay. That's great. Well, it gives me pleasure to say we have a motion. Barbara, second, Renee, maybe I should use the last word names instead. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Who could oppose the Friends of the Library? So thank you very much.
Mayor, can I make a request? Can we move number sixteen up to where we are now? There are seven people sitting in the back of the room who I know would like to put their heads on a pillow in the near future and get to work. Can we move that up? We've already had public expression, it's just ahead of the consent calendar and our reports.
We'll clear the room for the noise thing. That sounds appropriate for, there are really six people here for that item?
Seven.
It looks like seven, okay. That sounds good enough to me, so you moved to change that agenda like that?
Moving sixteen up.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Motion winds off, second caller. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous, and so, next we take regular agenda item number sixteen, the status of cleanup at 159 Willow Road. And Mark, you want to lead off on this?
Yes. I've been in contact with the owner since the last meeting, and unfortunately, not a lot has happened since the last meeting. I have received several other calls of concerns about the property. One of the calls was a concern that the trees in the back, some tall, popular trees, were dangerous. My expertise in trees is basically, it's either dead or it's green, and it looks green to me and looks alive, so I don't really, I can't really tell that it's a danger. We would need to have an arborist go out and look at it if we wanted to try to determine whether it's a threat to the property owners. There was also a call that there was, that there is a fourth living unit on the right-hand side of the property. I have not gone on the property to specifically look for that, but I can't see where there would be any space for a fourth living unit on the right-hand side. The house is pretty close to the property line, so I haven't confirmed that yet. I also got a call that there was a puff of smoke that came out of the smokestack, and then after the puff of smoke, there was heat. They could see that there was heat coming out of the smokestack for the fireplace, the wood stove. So I called Mr. Murn, I asked him, I said, have you been burning anything in the fireplace? He said, no, I haven't burned anything, but it does have a gas heater. I did turn on the gas heater. I reminded him that he had said he would remove it. He told me, a little while ago, he called and said that he did get it unhooked this afternoon, but I haven't confirmed that it's unhooked. As far as the abatement of the illegal units, that's still in the same place as it was before, so that's basically what has happened since the last meeting.
I had a thought, Mark, on this, on the gas heater issue. I mean, if this is using the same chimney as particle board, and who knows what has been used, I mean, there's probably residue in that chimney. I mean, and a gas heater is something that's legal, would it be possible? I mean, this is a source of heat, correct?
Well, apparently, there was smoke that went out at first, when he turned it on, and then appeared to be burning clean, but he has agreed to remove it and get something that's EPA-rated or not have anything at all.
Or presumably, a gas heater would...
A gas heater would be fine.
You know, need a vent to the outside, but would be approved by the EPA, because it's not burning any fuel besides gas, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, I'm trying to think of a way not to deprive somebody of heat, but also to have, you know, this resolved. Any other comments from up here?
I guess I have a question. At the last meeting, there appeared to be sort of some positive discussion, but from what you're saying, if I'm hearing you correctly, really, nothing has changed since the last meeting, as far as the condition of the property?
That's correct. It's the same as it was. And I have talked to Mr. Murn, and he has said that he's working on different, you know, trying to find out whether the second unit was legal or not, which requires him to get the handwritten records from the assessor and bring those into us, but that has not happened yet. He's had some personal issues that he's been dealing with.
Just, Larry? The one comment I want... ...that the wood-burning stove was going to be removed. You'll get a chance, so I just want to clarify, in the minutes, it indicated that, I don't think the minutes that were attached were actually accurate, because they don't recite the fact that there was an agreement that it was going to be removed. So is there any way we could just get, well, maybe Roy can address this, whether we can confirm that, get an inspection at least of that item to make sure it's actually been accomplished? Well, can I just get an answer from staff?
Yes, if he has me come up there, I can confirm that it's been removed, once it's been removed.
Okay.
But yes, he had agreed to remove it at the last meeting.
Right, okay, thanks.
Okay. Well, if there's no further comment here, I'd open it to public, and you'd come forth. Do you want to answer that, or does anybody else want to talk?
Did I take cuts in line?
I'm sorry?
Well, I just wanted to say, just...
Please speak into the microphone, otherwise, yeah, not everybody can hear you.
Perhaps from the last meeting to today, it doesn't seem like there's as much work, but there was a lot of work that I have done on the property. And it's been limited what I've been able to accomplish, just because I'm one guy. However, we have had other setbacks. My father-in-law had triple bypass. My auntie Mary, of course, has cancer, so that's always difficult. And I've had to do all the work myself, and there's not a whole lot of money to be able to work with. But I did stop using the fireplace. I got rid of the wood that we were burning in it, and truthfully, Mr. Carpenter probably didn't burn much wood in there before. All the wood that was burned was from me, and that has stopped. I have, I have all the stoves disconnected. You can come up with me tomorrow, and I'll show you what I have. I'm not sure, was there another question that I'm missing here?
I think one question is, so the wood stove was supposed to be removed, not just disconnected. So when it's removed, it should be removed and destroyed. Has that been done?
Okay, it's a fireplace, not a wood stove. And the only reason I haven't done that is because, well, I didn't know that I had to destroy it. It was, I agreed to stop using it. I agreed to take it out.
Well, I think it's a fireplace, it's different than what you're talking about.
A fireplace, yeah, you keep calling it a stove, and it's not a stove, it's a fireplace.
Okay.
And when it burns natural gas, it burns clean. It's true that I did have it on briefly one morning, but I thought that was okay. It was very cold that morning. But I did say I'd get rid of it. It's going to take some work, and it's going to take some money, but I'm not using it.
Is there a gas use in the fireplace?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there's a gas line, and then the burners, and then sand covered it.
In the fireplace?
In the, yeah.
And that's being vented through the chimney?
When I purchased the house, there were five fireplaces in it. And then there were two gas lamps on the outside, and I went through and I disconnected everything.
But you agreed to take it out?
I, you know, I was a little bit unclear. I was overwhelmed and shocked with what happened at the last meeting, because I wasn't aware of everything that was going on until that night. I did agree that I would stop using it. Maybe I did say I would take it out, but, you know, we already have an extreme financial hardship on us at the time, and I have to figure out how to be able to afford to take it out if I'm going to pay the money to take it out. When I purchased the property, I purchased it with the agreement that that fireplace would stay. He didn't care about any of the other ones, but he specifically asked that that one be left alone. And that's why they sold me the house. Now, I don't think I'm bound by anything at this point, but I'm certainly not trying to, you know, not do what I say I'm going to do.
What about the trash in the backyard?
There is no trash. See, I spent three weeks getting rid of everything the last time we talked. Now, it's true that it was going back and forth for a while. We've had to fix a lot of things at the house. There was a lot of in-depth stuff that was wrong.
What about the buildings themselves, the accessory structures? There's, was a...
Cosmetic, you know, we made them look pretty.
No, 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 no. There was a conversation between you and the building inspector about those buildings, and you were going to take certain steps. And what the building inspector is telling us today is that there's been a little, if any, movement on that.
Number one, I believe they're both legal, and I have made attempts to be able to get up to the Civic Center. I was in an accident that almost killed me, and that slowed me down. And I still don't have the working car that I once had to work with until the insurance takes care of it. But I've been working very hard, very diligently. It's been thirty days since the last month, since the last meeting. I've done a lot more than thirty days worth of work. Trying to get the investigative work done for that. And the thing is, the one that's part of the house, which was always part of the house, I'm sure would, would house us all comfortably, because I've been sleeping out there often as well. But it's, it's a, it's a pretty cottage, it's a pretty shed, and that's how we use it. So there's not a whole lot that has to be done, really, that's left. It was just capping the fireplace and taking out the two ovens that we didn't use anyway.
I have a suspicion that former Mayor Vanny, who's standing behind you, is going to clarify some of the relevant issues.
Okay.
Does the house have central heat or no?
It does have central heating, but that part of the house, I don't know when they, when they put that part on, but it didn't get the same insulation, et cetera, that the other part of the house had. So that side is very cold, and I noticed a difference.
There's some programs that have low-cost loans to help get the house, you know, insulated and things like...
It's taken me five years, but I finally got approved, and I'm doing that with PG&E currently.
Okay, so just so you know...
Thank you.
...to help.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Are there any other questions for me?
I mean, just in relation to the thing that I mentioned before, I mean, you know, you aren't burning wood in the chimney, but there's probably something left in that chimney...
Oh, I'm sure there's a little stick.
That's, yeah, and so, that could be a way to solve the neighbor's concern, but still keep you with some heat, you know?
Sure, and I was going to ask, I do like to be able to benefit from the heat. Unfortunately, I'm sorry for what I've caused, even though I wasn't really aware of it until recently.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's nice to get that heat, but I would almost think I could still do it with a cap. You know, the stack on the top cap? That's just reganulation.
Can I interrupt and ask a question? So I have a fireplace with a gas line. I don't use it because I don't believe in burning wood. In no way could I just fire up that gas line and heat up my house, so I'm not sure...
No, no, that doesn't happen.
So what was being done in that fireplace?
It fires the fireplace, it gives you a little flame, it's pretty.
But...
And it gives me heat, I sit right next to it.
It's actually, a fireplace doesn't heat your house, in fact, it brings cold air in, and by running the...
When the fire's off.
By running the gas line, you are...
I didn't do any of this, understand...
Okay, well, whoever did it is bringing gas into the house, which is a dangerous situation. If you cap that fireplace and you still run that gas line, you have a very dangerous situation in that house. So I would just say, you need to not use that for lots of reasons, for safety reasons more than anything, and I just think we need to get moving on this project. It's disappointing, and I realize you've had personal hardships, but...
But I've also gotten a lot further than you think I have, and I think you, I'm not clear about how the fireplace works and how the gas, there's nothing unsafe, there's nothing...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jim, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion before we hear from Mr. Vanny? Like we did on, I believe, Manor, we came up with a checklist, which gets things more definitive. I've not been in the unit myself, but Roy, if you would allow me to go up with Mr. Lockaby, I'd love to walk through and understand more fully the difference between the fireplace and the gas ranges, and what was being used to burn. I still don't have a handle on whether the fireplace is a wall fireplace or a free-spin, standing Franklin stove or whatever, but I'd like to come up, and I think if we were to create a checklist with you going through...
Oh, yeah.
Then we'd have something, and then put some dates on those, and then when we come back and report to you, we would have a definitive checklist to go through.
Yeah, I think that would be highly advantageous, just because it would make things clearer for you and make a clear process all the way through. So...
I also wanted to apologize for getting here so late tonight. I had a lot to do, and I had trouble at the Civic Center, so I didn't get that part completed either.
Yeah, and it's understood, and thanks for coming.
But to think, yeah, I do want to make it clear that I'm not sitting there doing nothing. I'm taking care of it as fast as I can, which I think is in a very timely manner, but I think the problem has stopped, with the exception of that one time, right?
I only had the one complaint.
Yeah, okay.
So it's, yeah, the usage is gone.
Okay, thanks.
I do keep my word.
We look forward to...
May I just ask?
Yeah, it's just something that we want to do tomorrow?
Mark, our building official will be in touch with you, and we'll work out a time when you're available, and we both have openings in our schedule, because there's a lot of things going on all the time.
Yeah.
But we'll get up there as soon as we can with your permission, and then just work with you to get a checklist together, and maybe, item by item, we can figure out what the difficulties are, and maybe we can help you find some solutions for those.
I would greatly appreciate it.
And I wonder, Jim, if perhaps there could be a timeline attached to that, just so that the neighbors know and can feel comfortable that there are some actual steps being taken.
We'll be going into overtime now to get on this process, but we'll get back to you with it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Steve? And anybody else from the public wants to speak on this item?
Thank you, Steve Vanny, 104 Chester. I'm the one who did call that in, you know, at four forty-five in the morning, and the smoke, and you can smell it, and it's coming right in my house. I couldn't see it because it's dark, but when I went out at six forty-five, when the light was there, you could see the stove, the flue is, the heat radiating off the flue. If it is gas that's burning, that's even worse than the firewood, because that particular unit, that stove, that flue, does not have the proper venting for the carbon monoxide. So we're just, he's just pouring out pure carbon monoxide out into the, into the, so it's just, it's just another one of these fire safety hazards that's just compounding with all the rest of it. There has been nothing done. As he talks about the owners that said that he had to keep the stove, the owners were passed away. It was their son who came down from Oregon who, who sold the house, so he never spoke to the owners, he would have no idea who the owners were. So that's another thing. There was no outbuildings, you know, I mean, they were not there until he, until he put them in, so there was no, no outbuildings, so there's just a lot of, lot of stuff going on. All the stuff in the front, very nicely cleaned in the front yard, but when you look down, there's still the, you know, the vehicles in the driveway, there's still a lot of material between my house and his house down the side of the house. In the backyard, there's pictures, we have pictures, we can keep coming down and bringing pictures, but I appreciate the fact that maybe we're going to actually come and take a look, put some timelines to this thing, because this has been going on for seven years, and there is just no... years, and there is just no change, and we hate to keep having to come down here and asking for help, but we don't, I, there's just, there's no alternative at this point, you know, we just, it's not working. So we really appreciate anything that you folks can do, really appreciate the help, and I just, I would feel much better, be able to sleep at night, if at minimal, that flue was capped off. At minimum, I mean, the whole thing needs to be taken out, because it's not safe. It's not safe for, it's not safe for Roy inside the house. And it's certainly not safe for any of us outside, because we're, it was bad enough with the firewood, it wasn't even firewood, I'm saving firewood. It was bad enough with the toxic waste that was being burnt, but now, you know, pure gas with the carbon monoxide is just, that's even worse. So, thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's James Hurd, I live at 84 Chester Avenue. I am a little concerned that there's been not much in the way of a site check, or that there wasn't, my understanding is that there was a list of things that had to be done at this home. The fireplace, at the very least, needs to be capped off. We have seen this for years, where the smoke goes through my neighbor's house. I fortunately live upwind. I have photographs on my iPad, just three of them, that I took the night before the last council meeting. These photographs, the house in the backyard looks the same as it does from when these photographs were taken. There is wood piled up against the Vanny's fence, there is debris, there's plastic that's been put around the deck, I suspect, because stuff has been stuffed underneath it. I'm surprised that there hasn't been a site check. I'm also surprised that the owner of record is not here, considering the gravity of the situation. We cannot let this continue.
Who's the owner of that?
If I am not, my understanding is Roy's estranged wife, am I correct on this? That is my understanding of them. At least that was what I had read in the details.
The assessor's shows that Gina Longo is the owner of the property, but Roy had said that he's on the title as well.
It's a joint title, and when I purchased it, I purposely put it in her name, and I'm here.
We do need to get this situation mitigated. Debris need to be cleaned up around the house, and this fireplace needs to be capped off. And this is just not a six-month thing, this has to continue for the years going down the road. We have a clear record of the past five years of the city coming in and requiring a cleanup. And we, I very much hope that you're able to help us with the mitigation, and hopefully keep us from having to have to go through the court system to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sandra Cornell, I live at 169 Willow, and we keep talking about a fireplace and the flue or the chimney, it's a smokestack, isn't it? Isn't that a smokestack? It's a smokestack, and not a tall one. Do you know how tall that is?
Five, six feet.
It's pointed at his house, right at his house. This stuff is blowing at his house, and then it comes and circles into our house, our yard. So we're not talking about chimneys, really. It's a smokestack, like an old-fashioned smokestack, right into your property. That's what we're talking about. So I think it, I don't know if it's legal, is that legal? I don't know. But we need to find out and take care of it.
Thank you.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Briefly, I'd like a chance to defend myself, because when dishonest statements are made repeatedly, that to me is slander. I also didn't appreciate the threat to the town. Of course this will be taken care of. I've done a lot more work than it sounds like I've done. According to these people, I haven't done anything. I'm not even sure why, there's, I guess I'm curious why I wasn't even informed of the problem with the fireplace for five and a half years. Somebody just tell me, gosh, we don't like the smoke coming out, don't use it. I got a complaint about a piece of particle board that I burned, and a complaint about a piece of styrofoam that I burned, and they were both on accident, and it was with your father that I spoke, Steve, who isn't here, I see. Well, without saying anymore, I would like to confer with you afterwards, and then address this thing openly, honestly, and get it taken care of. You know, I do own the house, right? I purchased it, I should have some rights to it. But the innuendo and the accusations, which are completely false, come and look, I'll bring you there myself. I really don't appreciate it, I don't know why you're doing it, but you still don't...
Mr. Mayor, I think, yeah, I think we don't want the dialogue to involve into two people talking to each other.
I mean, there, we do have a, you know, don't disparage others and question their motives, but basically, I think if we can move, we can move forward here, which is what we need to do. And if you work with our planning director, Jim Moore, and Mark, and work out a thing, they're both very reasonable, and we can work out a plan to make this work for everybody.
I think you're all very reasonable, and I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Bertaki, I live at 84 Chester, and James Hurd and I live together, we've been there, I've been there for about 15 years. 159 Willow is immediately adjacent to our backyard, so we see a lot of what's stored back there. I just want to say that we take a lot of pride in our neighborhood, and we're good neighbors, and I just feel like there's no pride in that property. And I think that it's disrespectful to the people that live in, at that property, as well as the neighbors, to not have more respect for all of us. And I also want to point out, Roy and I have had direct conversations about the problems with fireplace, which he has denied on more than one occasion. And I don't want this to turn into a witch hunt, I just want it to, I want it to get cleared up, and I appreciate your help and your support, and I hope that we can all work together to try to resolve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for this reason for our...
And at this point, seeing no further comment, I'd like to close the public section of this and bring it back.
Yeah, I have some thoughts on this. The first thing is, we've never had to do this in all of my time dealing with nuisance abatement, usually the, or the concept of nuisance abatement, usually one meeting is enough to have a conversation with the property owner and have them move expeditiously and without delay toward correcting the problem. This is not occurring here. So I would, I would, please put down your hand. What I would like to know now is the process for assessing administrative fines.
Well, I think the options to staff, administrative fines are at a staff discretion. It was something that would be go out there, take a look, and we believe they're not cooperating, then that's something we'd take a look at. Similarly, we could also schedule a nuisance abatement hearing if we think we aren't making progress. I think what I would suggest is, I think if our planning director and building official can go out there, assess situations, set a timeline, and if it's not proceeding, then we're gonna have to pursue whatever mechanisms we would normally pursue, which is administrative citations and nuisance abatement hearing.
So could you explain more fully? Because again, we, at least in my time, I'm not conversant with the process of the administrative fine. So how can, Mark, perhaps you could elucidate on that?
Well, if he fails to comply, then we issue a fine, and it starts out at $100, and if...
Can I just ask a silly question?
Sure.
Fails to comply with what?
With the list that we put together, and he's not doing that in a timely manner, and taking care of the items on the list, then we can start issuing citations that start out at $100. The next time, it goes up to $300, and following that, it goes up to $500, and it can be consecutively every day, $500, until he starts getting in compliance.
This is within your discretion, and you don't have to come back to council to do this?
That's correct.
So by the time we reconvene on the 6th of November, you could have prepared the list, made your recommendations and demands, and in fact, have issued an administrative citation if you wish?
That's correct.
Okay. Can I add something for the record? Mark has been out there in the last 30 days period, and he went out there after the complaint was filed, when there was a smoke coming out of the chimney. It was my understanding that we had reached an agreement with Roy at the last meeting, there would be no more fires out of that fireplace. So when we discussed it as soon as he came back, correct me if I'm wrong, we, which is staff's discretion, we all report to Mr. Toy, but at staff's discretion, we informed him that he had broken the agreement, and we said, if you do this again, we'll administer a fine.
I'm not sure that I did say that to him.
Okay.
I didn't hear the last part yet.
Okay. Just clearing something up with the building official as to what you were informed of, I was under the impression that we had made that statement, but if we haven't, then that's the direction we're going.
May I, may I just chime in? I would like to recommend that we take the first step that we had already laid out, which is that you two would go up there, do a very clearly outlined list of, of the, excuse me, of the issues, and a timeline attached to each one. And setting the fireplace aside, I think that by issuing an administrative fine to a gentleman who's already expressed that he's under dire financial hardship, is definitely not going to move us toward our goal. So I would like to start with that and see what we can do if we are very specific, very clear, and set very clearly defined timeline before we talk about fines to someone who is having some struggles.
Can I just add, as far as the checklist, I think that's a good, good move, that worked well on the other project. Since we really have lost a month since we really started this, and I know there's been some progress, but limited, I'd like to suggest that, given your schedules, that you make every attempt to get out there very soon, short deadlines, and particularly for the fireplace, that's a safety issue, so we need to get these things done. I'm hopeful that November 6, we have 90 to 100% of these things taken care of, so that there are short deadlines. And I don't, I think as far as the council's recommendations, I would leave it to the discretion of staff as far as any such fines, but I'd really like to see short deadlines and get this moving, so that we don't lose another month, and people don't have to come out again.
Yeah, well, I can appreciate the, you know, short deadline, the want, desire for short deadlines and things like this, but I think basically what we're looking for is results that matter to the neighbors, and I think, Jim, you have a pretty good sense of the types of things that are going to make the most difference to the neighbors, and those should be at the top of the list. I also agree with Renee, that we need to take, you know, financial constraints into account. I mean, you know, you don't want to hit somebody when they're down, at the same time, you want to see movement. And, you know, if it, if it takes help getting to the goal by setting timelines, by having a punch list of, you know, what's gonna, you know, what you do first, what you do second, you know, all the way down the list, I think that that really will help, and I think it will help communication. I heard you state, Roy, that you were under the stand, under the understanding that you weren't to burn wood, and so you didn't do that, but you burned gas, and there was, you know, I think communication, having it clear...
Certainly, I agree with you.
Yeah, will help you, and it'll help the neighbors, and it'll help the whole process, so...
Because I, you need to see this, because it's not 2%, it's not, it's 95%.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you're talking off the record right now from the back, but, you know, without the microphone, but really, I think the next movement is just to meet as we planned with the building inspector. Okay? So, thank you.
And these will not be made on the... Town manager report is noted in the staff report, but we're gonna get this on for a regular council agenda item.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so then, staff feels directed, then we will move on then to the next, well, not the next agenda item, this is getting kind of mixed up here, but I think we're at council reports.
Yeah.
And you want to start on your end this time, Renee? Or, you kick it off a lot of times.
I always go first.
Whatever.
All right. I attended the MCC MC dinner with a bunch of folks, and the legislative committee as well met monthly. What was interesting about this particular month was, we took an extra 45 minutes or so to actually have a number of folks come in and discuss SEQA developments, or as the case may be, non-developments. There had been a movement toward SEQA gutting, if you will, at the legislative level, but it all thankfully came to naught. Doesn't mean it won't come back. Many of those bills are two-year bills, and they may well rear their ugly head, but at least for the moment, SEQA stands on all, on all of its legs. Stopped by the town picnic with Barbara, met with the manager to talk about FEMA flood grants that might be available, and I want to thank the manager for, and I imagine you too, Jim, for, you know, setting that up and actually being proactive on potential funds that could be gotten from FEMA here. I attended the Army Corps charrette the first morning of a three-day charrette that was established by the Corps to deal with what we call the lower reaches of the Ross Valley. 1986 legislation prohibits the Corps from being above the Ross Bridge, the Lagunitas Bridge, but much significant work is under the Susurinti, if you will, and direction of the Army Corps of Engineers going down the Cordera Creek, and the question is how and to what degree can funding be accessed and projects be developed to, to open that up? I thought that we made a very persuasive, I was told, that we made a very persuasive argument to Corps staff. I was stunned. I mean, there must have been well over a dozen members of the Corps in attendance at the charrette at all levels, and highly sophisticated, and each of the towns sent a representative, all of, we spoke, and of course, the county was well represented, Supervisor Rice guided the conversation, I thought, very successfully and effectively. I, once all of the reports coalesce, I'll come back to the council and the community and sort of give a sense of what this, the result of this charrette can be and will be. Finally, on the fire board, we at the moment have the extremely unpleasant task of trying to figure out the impossibility, but at least the work of finding a new chief. As the community may know, Chief Miegers is leaving us on December 31st, and with a heavy heart, the fire board is working assiduously in a, in an attempt to somehow find a replacement for the work that you have done. And of course, Don and I will report back on developments as they proceed through the rest of the year.
Barbara?
Thank you. I attended a meeting on the Fairfax Climate Action Plan with a couple of members of the G-PIC. I attended the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members event about a week ago, and one of the presentations that I think was really useful was on juvenile restorative justice programs, which have worked really well in the county. So that's something I'd like to look into more. Attended the Fairfax Town Picnic. Monday, I am our representative on the county Community Development Block Grant Committee, and attended the meeting where, among other things, we appointed community residents to be part of the committee, and from Fairfax, our representative is now Andrew Marshall. Another person who attended the meeting from the fair housing of Marin is Matt Oglender, and gave a short presentation on a number of things that can provide residents in Marin, but one of the things that I think is important for the community to hear is where there are pending foreclosures. Matt may be able to provide some assistance. So I got his information if people are interested. They also did a presentation on affirmatively furthering fair housing in Marin, and there's things that we can become a part of, which are brown bag sessions, and I think I will follow... follow through on that. Also participated, as David said, on a small subcommittee with David and myself and our town manager on the Town Hall Flood Plan Project for a FEMA grant. Thank you.
You want to go next, Jim?
It was a pretty busy time between meetings for me. I'm our representative to the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority. That authority is actually at the end of its current assessment period. It's gonna have to go back on our ballot, I think, next year, which sort of ties into this whole MIRA issue that we were discussing earlier today. The Ross Valley actually has the least expensive paramedic service of all the different districts in Marin, so it's, it's definitely delivering high-quality service at a very low price, but it's gonna have to get re-approved by the voters, I believe, next year, so that's gonna be coming back to the, for the council. I attended the Marin Energy Authority's annual retreat, which was a full-day retreat. I wasn't able to stay for the full day, but very interesting developments, just, just sort of cutting-edge reports on energy, storage strategies from Tesla presented at the meeting. The authority is also getting into providing low-interest loans to our customers to do energy upgrade and to do conservation. So I don't know if Mr. Marin is a customer of MEA or, or if he's a customer of PG&E, but there are resources out there to actually get money, resources to actually make the improvements that are needed to bring his home presumably, and a lot of other homes here in Fairfax, up to modern standards and to conserve energy. And that's definitely where we're gonna be saving the most, where we're gonna be reducing our greenhouse gas output here in our community is by just doing conservation and energy savings. So that is, that is part of MEA's mission, and hopefully I'll be able to report in more detail. I've been attending various meetings throughout the county on the Marin, on the Community Media Center of Marin. It's gonna be on our agenda in a couple items. I attended the Tiburon Meeting, the San Anselmo Meeting, and I'm happy to say that both of those cities approved, in, in theory, helping the media center, so Fairfax is not standing alone by any means. And let me see what else. One other thing that's worth mentioning, there is a very, very interesting piece of open space property that has come on the market. I attended a, actually a closed session meeting at the county with Mayor Reed. There's gonna be another meeting coming up. Can't really say much about it at this point, but hopefully it'll become public in the next couple of weeks, but I think it's gonna be a real prize if we can land this open space property.
Get a little bit with that. I need that to do.
Can't, can't say where it is.
Renee?
Okay. So I'm actually glad to hear that about MEA and that we're really trying to charge up the resilient neighborhoods, and those are the kinds of things that...
There's, there's resources.
Yeah, excellent. So I have done many things this past month, but I'm gonna pick some highlights. Attended the school board meeting where they discussed the results, the site feasibility study in order to potentially move the multi-age program from Manor to Red Hill. So that has large implications and has been very contentious, and they had a wonderful meeting and very productive, and we'll move to the next steps in a, in a peaceful manner, which is good. Spent some time up at White Hill with the principal and at White Hill with the homeowners' Association folks who have had longstanding complaints and problems with parking and school parents parking in their spots, and now there's, of course, the, the construction that's gone on for a year and will soon be ending, but there's issues around lighting, there's issues around curb appeal. And so we're working together and also with Supervisor Rice's aide Nancy Vernon to see what we can do to, to, again, bring some peace to the neighborhood. Let's see, I spent a lot of time sorting waste at the town picnic, which is always great, and it was my birthday, doing what I like to do. Let's see, I wanted to report that the pilots for the green waste collection in our multifamily units have, the few that I looked at were fabulously clean. So I'm very glad to say that it looks like the multifamily composting programs are in a good place to move forward and that we can keep advocating for that to come in. Made a film yesterday, actually just the backside of me made a film, and we rode the bike spine, which, which Louis Vaccaro Jr. was talking about, in order to educate people and put it into school newsletters and blogs about how you actually ride this bike spine and why. So that should be coming out. Don't ever have anyone ride behind you for forty-five minutes because, anyway. Been attending Rotary Club meetings to understand what folks are up to and what folks care about, and watched the screening of the new Marin County Bicycle Coalition film, promotional film, and really actually, it became, instead of a request for funding, it became much more of a, of a, here's our issues around bikers, which is a great conversation to be had, so these, everybody's, everybody's thinking. Talked about trees, talked about prioritizing, potentially prioritizing trees over parking places, which is another one of those wonderful conversations, but we may be making progress in trying to create some shared space for trees and parking lots. And this morning, the local task force meeting for the, for the Joint Powers Authority of Solid and Hazardous Waste at the county, the Roof to Roads Program, which is taking the roofing materials and mixing it in order to use it for roadways, is working its way through Caltrans and looking for pilot projects. And the Extender Producer Responsibility Sharps and Pharmaceuticals Lobby is making progress, and at the local level, we're continuing to do work on how to actually do the outreach so people know what in the world to do with their sharps and leftover unwanted pharmaceuticals.
Thanks. That's it?
That's it.
A slow month, is that it? Yeah, everybody's had a pretty fast month, and some of these meetings I was together, like with the fire board meeting, I was together with David Weinsdorf, and, you know, we're looking for replacement. I won't repeat all the details of these. One thing that I was, I met with Garrett, our town manager, and also Mel Peratus. Basically, we, there's, we're developing a plan for a volunteer-based downtown gardening maintenance program, which is, you know, taking some money that we've got, a little bit, and actually a fair amount of water that we've get that's produced by the Good Earth and combining them into something that will look unified, make our downtown look better, and tending to the places that don't, you know, quite look maintained all the way. I met with the Climate Action Committee here, was part of the G-PIC. Let me see, a couple of meetings with the Transportation Authority and a couple with the school board that, one of which, the map that Renee talked about, Safe Routes to School, and meeting about the bike spine. The pick made, you know, did quite a bit on the picnic, as usual, it's a great event. Attended the MCCMC meeting that you heard Barbara talk about, and the open space meeting that I also cannot tell you the piece of property, but it's, it's interesting and it's a, it's a key piece related to Fairfax, and I think it will be, it'll be good. I hope it comes out. I think Monday is the next meeting on that. The main meeting that I went to outlasted our Fairfax council meetings by a few hours. It was seven hours long. It was TAM meeting where basically it was the, the information on the table, the issue on the table was around the Green Bray interchange money, and you probably read about it in the paper, but just to, long story short, a lot of the money was not put towards freeway lanes, which seemed all of them way over the budget of the money that was available and would actually, it seemed, not deal with the problem as it was seen by the board there. We put money towards a variety of different projects. One was studying the interchange from 101 to 580 in Sinterfell as a direct freeway connection to, that would probably make a lot of sense if that makes, if that's possible to pull off. And we put a lot of funding towards basically making connections with both the Smart Train and bicycle pedestrians to the ferry, things like that. It's not all the money that's needed for that, but we certainly can get a lot of the environmental clearance out of the way, hopefully. And got a smart agreement to cooperate with the, with TAM in terms of using the right-of-way south of that, which is a major connector that needs to be made. And basically, if all of those come to fruition and that there is a direct connection with the local areas getting to, being able to get to the ferry without using cars, we'll, you know, basically having public transportation, trains, buses, bicycles, walking, all connect to the public transportation of the ferry, we can go a long way to both relieve congestion and lower our greenhouse gases. So that was an interesting meeting, and it's hard to sum up seven hours in whatever, just a couple of minutes, but there you have it. That's what I understand.
John, can I add one thing?
Yes.
Sorry, David. I just needed to report that a very successful thing happened last Friday night, and that was that the Life Water Surf Shop sponsored and paid for a surf movie night on the ball field, which we sponsored, and the youth commission had a kickoff, and everything came together, and there were probably three hundred teenagers in one safe place at the same time enjoying themselves, and I would really love to see that become something that we can do more often moving forward from all areas, from, from the retailers to, I believe, the town, to the youth of our, of our community. I think we provided a service that is a model. So, thank you to everyone.
That's excellent. That's phenomenal. Great news. So, thank you.
So it's half to ten. What are we gonna get done tonight?
That's a good question.
Meadowway Bridge is, we've got, our, our only audience member, I think, is here for that, so. We also have the Noise Ordinance Amendment, which got bumped last month, and I could probably do in thirty seconds. If you could vote fast.
Thirty seconds sounds pretty...
That's pretty optimistic.
Pretty optimistic, yes.
We have a town manager request.
Okay. Well, moving down this, looking from the top of this, we have the town manager report, we got the consent calendar, we have the noise...
Right. Noise and fifteen's gonna be continued.
And compactor fees.
Compactor fees will be continued to November.
Could be, or should be.
It should be. Then we're gonna request that anyway for item fifteen, it'd be continued.
Because there's more information needing...
Well, what we need to do is we need to realize how many days we have to notice it in the IJ prior to the public hearing. It's twenty days, so we have to redo it.
So we have to continue that? Okay. Well, when we were talking about continuing the various items, it would be good to have that laundry list, I think, but, so that would be the contractor, compactor fees. And then we have...
We have seventeen, which is the mandatory commercial recycling ordinance. It'd be nice to just, I don't think that'll take very long. It'd be nice to get that done. Eight, nineteen is the, is the bridge item. That'd be nice to get that done. And then twenty's franchise fees. Town surplus property, you can continue that. Twenty-two, I think for twenty-two, really important thing is, you don't have to approve the authority for the draft agreement, but it'd be good to start forming a committee so we could just get started on the work plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's January that we're looking for the funding to come.
That, that's correct. So you would like to have a work plan in place by then.
Okay. So does anybody want to pull anything that wasn't mentioned as potential continuance, or should we see how far we get through? We got an hour? I think, yeah.
So we have town managers.
Yeah. I'm up for just rolling through. Can you give a town managers report?
Sure. Real quick, one thing I forgot since you mentioned the picnic, I do have a video of you in the potato sack race. Probably should share that with everyone at some point in time.
What, you get projected here in the world?
And the other thing is, I thought it'd be important to let the clerk kind of give you an update on the vacancies, because we have an update and some things that are coming to you in November.
Okay.
I'll do it really fast. We have two park vacancies, Parks and Rec, one was, and then one that's coming up in another month, so we'll have three vacancies by next month. The good news is we have three applications already, so I can put that on the agenda. And the open space committee, we just got an application for that vacancy. That's been a long time, so.
Terrific, so we can all see all four of those in November?
Yeah.
Excellent.
And so the other thing is maybe, Jim, could just give a quick update on the Good Earth, and then housing element, you're gonna need a special meeting, and then there's another vacancy on the Affordable Housing Committee since Phil Green is off now.
Right. So on the housing element, we've gotten feedback through our subconsultant from the state to expedite that feedback rather than putting it in long form. They did a telephone interview. We have those further narrative amendments they are asking us to make, which we're gonna put in track change, and we'll be ready to present that to you in the week of the twenty-first of this month. So I'm hoping that you're all around during that week, and we can play email tag on the night that works for you all. And I won't belabor that point, but, you know, we're on a tight timeline, and HCD is aware of our tight timeline, and they're helping, and they're, we're all working together to get to the finish line. They are very detail-oriented on what they want to be included, so there's no surprises, there's no poison pills, and we'll have it in the most easily digestible form for you when we meet on this specific subject. So that's in the...
Long meeting.
We should be able to go through it, I hope, within an hour to an hour and a half. We were successful within an hour and a half when we did the joint meeting, and this is much less narrative additions.
And do you not know when you're gonna get this back from them, in some way?
No, I've got, I've got the issues. I've got the, I've got the changes they're requesting. I've gone through it with both subconsultants this afternoon, and we're making those track changes, and I should have an admin draft for in-house review next week. And then we need to notice for the meeting of the twenty-first, ten days ahead, so we'll notice it next Friday on the eleventh. And that would, we'd be good to go any day on that week of the twenty-first by noticing it on the eleventh, I believe. Actually, it might be starting the twenty-second. I'll double-check and I'll send an email out to you all.
That week starts the twenty-first?
Yeah.
This is Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. And then... If you want to do it by email, we can do that, or we can talk about it right now? People have this, you don't have to go?
The clerk, the clerk will check with you and the calendar's typically special meetings.
Okay.
That'd be great. So moving on to GE, they are on the docket for the Pond and Commission October seventeenth. That's the third Thursday of the month, the regular pond and commission meeting. We will be revisi, it's been six months since we revisited their conditions of approval and the truck issue. If you recall, all the other issues of how things were built were resolved with the exception of the trucks, the compliance of the trucks, and the request of the Good Earth to relax from six o'clock on. We facilitated two collective meetings between the representatives of the neighbors and the Good Earth. Those have transpired. The last one was in August, I think I reported that to you, in September. And we will, in addition to be, to revisiting the compliance issue with the trucks, we will also be entertaining an application by the Good Earth to extend the wall along Sir, the fence, the fencing along Sir Francis Drake, which we're hoping will help mitigate the noise traveling up the Willow direction. That may or may not, probably in all likelihood, not help the neighbors on the Bell direction, but we'll be better educated after the October seventeenth meeting with regards to the truck compliance issue and the success or not of mitigating noises from whatever number of trucks are arriving before seven in the morning. And I'll report back to you at the November sixth meeting on that also.
Thank you. All right. All right. Consent, do I hear a motion for consent? Is there any comments on anything on consent?
Yes, just one very briefly on the minutes under council reports and comments, just a, it suggests that I attended the Flood Zone 9 Army Corps meeting regarding funding for dredging. I was saying that I would be attending, and this month I'm saying that I have attended.
With that clarification, is there anything else?
There was one thing I just wanted to bring up, which was related to Roy Murren's issue, and I just thought, it's on page, it's on page five, and, now I'm not sure where it is, but there was an indication that the owner agreed to.
This paragraph.
It said the, the owner agreed to stop using the fireplace, and I, I just want to make clear, and I don't even know if you need to amend the minutes, but at least it's my recollection that there was an agreement to remove the fireplace or the, what we thought was the fire, the fire stove, so.
I agree.
I, I think that was the agreement, but.
I can go back and check the video and talk to Tony.
I mean, let me, I'll just make that comment for the record.
And in addition, this is not on the minutes, but Agenda Item 9 on consent. In the discussion, it says the people who would sign checks would be the manager, finance director, town treasurer, and police chief. And in the actual resolution, it says the town, town manager, it says the same thing. I thought it. There's a different one, which is inconsistent with the report and the.
Well, it says the town manager shall have authority to add or delete positions to the list of approved signers. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that item number two there.
Right.
And, you know, that basically we're signing it away forever.
So maybe we could just delete.
Delete number two.
Delete number two.
Well, I think a clarification, I don't think you're signing it away forever. I think I did put that we were, the town manager would report such changes to the council. I think what happens is that what we found, doesn't happen often, what we found with just people going on vacation, we need to get a check for escrow, and I had to call the town treasurer because I didn't have anybody on staff to sign other than myself. And so being able to have some of that flexibility would be good, and that's why I added, I would report to council on all the changes, because it's just more of a, it's more of an administrative type thing. But again, that's what we're suggesting, but if the, if the council would prefer, we always come back with a resolution, we can do that.
Yeah, and I could appreciate.
Could I make a suggestion? You know, instead of on an annual basis that you just report such changes to the council at the next scheduled meeting, so that we're not, it doesn't get lost in, you know, over time.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, that would, just so we have a, kind of a more accountability there. If that's agreeable to everybody else?
Yes.
That sounds reasonable. And the other item that I, that I spotted the discrepancy, it was basically declaring an emergency in a situation, and in the minutes it had the fire chief on there, and then it had the council. I'm not opposed to either being there, the council or the fire chief declaring an emergency.
Where's that from?
I, I don't think it's actually on a consent item, because I didn't find it in my quick.
Are you talking about the noise ordinance?
I think that was the noise ordinance.
Oh, well, we're going to have that as a, on the next item, or a public hearing.
Yeah, so, you know, I was going from my aging memory and thinking that that was something on consent that I should bring up at this point, but I saw that it was the other, the second item that we just dealt with. So apologies for that one, and we'll deal with that on noise.
So could I make a motion that for items five through 10, that with the changes discussed, that we approve the consent calendar?
Oh, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion, Kohler, second, Wysoff. All those in favor?
Aye. I don't know, are we supposed to ask for public comment?
Oh, that's true. Apologies. Public comment?
Doesn't look like it's coming.
From staff or, okay.
There we go.
Well, yeah, it's good to do protocol. That is one of the other problems with going this late. So we have a motion, and I believe that's seconded and approved unanimously, correct?
Yes.
You have for that, Larry? Okay.
Yes, with the changes.
All right. Excellent, with the changes. Thank you, and then.
Item 11.
Oh, item.
That goes to the end of the.
I'm sorry?
That, item 11 goes to the end of the agenda. That's, or unless you want to do it now. We've got somebody waiting.
Yeah, we've got somebody waiting right here. So should we take the bridge before the noise?
Yes.
Let's do that. Or you want to sit there? Are you happy, comfortable?
No, I've got to be up on the coast, um, sort of, some time.
Well, that's hours from now.
If you do 30 seconds, 30 whatever, let's get, does he, uh, planning director out here? I could do mine. Let's, let's do the bridge.
Let's do the bridge. Take it to the bridge, as they say.
19.
All right, well, the bridge is in fact, item number 18, 19, excuse me, approval of agreement with the CIC, with CIC for preliminary engineering, environmental, community outreach, design services for the Meadowway Bridge, and I believe is actually for all of them.
Well, actually, you approved the other services for the other bridges at last meeting, and the only thing we held back was the services for Meadowway.
Okay, because that was the, had the changes.
That's correct.
Okay.
So would you like a staff report, or?
Sure.
Okay. So again, what, what we're doing is we're requesting authority for the town manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with CIC for preliminary engineering, community outreach, environmental design work for the Meadowway Bridge in amount not to exceed $140,000. May recall, back in August, council considered award to CIC, however based on community input, we were directed to modify the scope work to make it clearer what to go on. Last meeting in September, council agreed to continue discussion regarding the Meadowway Bridge to October, but approve that portion of the agreement for the Creek Road Bridge and the other three bridges under the BPMP program. Again, under the revised Meadowway scope of work, community workshop will be held before we do any assessments. We'll do some field inspections, but no assessments. Objective of the workshops, try to answer the questions of the neighborhood, give us direction on assessment reports and what should be studied in the future. One of the group, one of the residents did submit a list of questions and alternatives that represented a group of the neighbors, what staff did, we took a look at that, and we tried to summarize it in terms of options and questions to be addressed to make it more efficient for the consultant. We did send that to the neighborhood. We did send notices to all the residents in the neighborhood of this meeting, and so you could tell by their turnout, I think they seem okay with the scope of work and what we're proposing. And actually, what we're proposing for the consultant is, we're going to take a look at three options. One is repairing the existing bridge, what that would take. Two is replacing the existing bridge with another one-lane wooden bridge, and then three, take a look at a concrete steel-type bridge that would meet Caltrans standards.
One lane.
Those are the three.
One lane.
One lane, yeah, it's all one lane. They're all one-lane bridges.
All one-lane bridges, yeah.
I'm sorry, make that clear.
I mean, everybody loves a bridge.
All one lane. And the goal is, we would have a community workshop to talk about these type of issues to extent we could, based on our field inspections. After that, then we would go ahead with more of the assessments, would be any test boring and whatever else that we need to be, needs to get done. So with that, reiterate, really the objective of Phase 1 of this contract is really to collect all the information needed for the council, and that includes all the input from the community, so that you could be able to decide how to proceed with Phase 2. Phase 2 being design of whatever that specific option would be, although parts of Phase 2 could be exploring options more in depth and then deciding on option. But we're just not there yet. In terms of the contract, it's for a total $479,000 with this amendment of that, $26,000 is town's match, so it's a highly leveraged type of project. And in talking to the consultant, we're looking at maybe a community workshop in mid-October. We'd actually, we'd talk to the neighborhood. Our goal would then would be begin field inspections in a couple of weeks and then try to get as many responses to the questions that were addressed in this scope of work by November 1st to the neighborhood. And with that, that concludes the staff report.
Okay. Are there any clarifications that you need? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I received some questions from someone in the community, and my understanding of what you're doing with this contract, if I read it correctly, was that the plan was only to do assessment of these options and look at impact on vegetation, among other things. However, because some of the old parts of the contract are in there, it's not really clear to me. So the questions were surrounding things like removal of certain trees, and I could get specific, but I'd rather ultimately just forward these specific questions about tree removal, and that it does appear that there may need to do, and I wasn't clear from reading the contract, so I apologize, but there may need to be some work done in the creek to do this assessment, and that might involve removing some trees. Was that incorrect assessment on my part?
In speaking to the consultant, I don't think we anticipated anything at that level to do the testing.
Okay, so my first read of the contract looked like you were going to do like field inspections, but not necessarily getting down into the creek with a drill rig or anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there might, there could be some test boring. I think what we're doing is, and part of the questions was to analyze the impact of vegetation. And so before we do anything that invasive, we'd be able to share with the community what exactly we would have to do for testing and what that would mean. And so at that point, then we could decide or disclose what we think needs to be, get done. But right now, it'd be premature, because we're, we're not at that point yet.
Okay, so just like what we did last meeting where we asked you specifically to look at these 10 questions or issues that were raised, what I would like to do is forward the detailed questions on these trees so that you and working with the consultant can make sure that the vegetation impacts would, would answer those questions. Is that appropriate to do?
I think that's great. Question A actually is that, impacts of vegetation, including trees.
Yeah, but I think we're getting into like real details about this tree versus this tree and removing.
Right.
A lot of trees, and so I'd rather you have that so you understand kind of what the questions are.
Sure. I think that's great, it's just that I can't promise we're going to know those answers prior to community workshop.
And that's, I think that's okay, but at least going forward, a commitment to really come back with those answers would be useful. Okay, I'll forward that.
Yeah. And I guess the only thing that I want to clarify is that we will, with this initial inspection, you know, be able to have enough in its information to have a legitimate conversation with the community in terms of what structural things we're finding, obviously, you know, a stress test or something like that is not in order, but at least, you know, some, having an engineer looking at the bottom of the bridge, because it's our duty as a council to make sure that the bridge is strong enough to last for a while, so. Just going in, I, I think that you're, I take it that you're confident enough. I see that some of that has been moved out after the initial conversation with the community.
Right, I, I think actual testing might be something that would come after the community workshop. Looking at things, it's something we could do ahead of time. We just wanted to make sure that the community understood we weren't doing anything. We were looking at things, but we weren't going to do any testing until they had an opportunity to discuss things with us.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate then, but it's just good to be educated, you know. Okay, thank you. And is there other comment from up here? Is there a comment?
I mean, just to, to double check it, you know, it says the revised Phase 1 scope of the work indicates the community workshop will be held before any assessment or studies are performed on the bridge. So that seems pretty clear to me. And, you know, that's, that's a definition that's agreed upon in the agreement with the contractor. You know, I think we're in pretty good shape. So thank you for doing that.
I'd like to open it up to the public for coming. That would be you.
Frank Eger, 13 Meadowway. Just for the record, if I could, you know, I made some previous comments about Mira, and, you know, one of the four council members as part of that, that study we did was a 42-year San Francisco Police Captain who's, was very familiar with emergency relief systems. And the information that we, that we got, we received from a county communications contractor who was not able to make those references made, because he was being paid by the county. So let me get into the Meadowway Bridge.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that would be more appropriate, but thanks for that.
The, you know, the Meadowway Bridge has been listed as functionally obsolete, and it joins a large number of California bridges that are declared in a federal report as functionally obsolete, including the Canyon Road Bridge and the Golden Gate Bridge. We're in good company on Meadowway. The, in fact, is, when the big one hits, the Canyon Road Bridge is going down and the Meadowway Bridge will be standing. So, you know, as a longtime resident of Meadowway, I feel pretty safe out there with that bridge. Unfortunately, the town did not approve, you know, the concrete bridge that, that we'd put on Canyon, because at the time, they talked about early nights, putting the same type of bridge on Meadowway. And if the town would have spent the money then, and it was a larger portion of town funds that were taken, that took, to, to get complete Canyon Road, if the town would have done that with Meadowway, they would have been facing the same problem, then it would have been a functionally obsolete concrete bridge. But anyway, you know, what, what happens on Meadowway is a quality of life issue, and I'm pleased that the council is in tune with that and concerned about, about the trees, that no trees will be removed before the council gets the final report and acts on it. And, you know, it alludes to a drilling rig going in the creek, and I think Councilmember Kohler mentioned that, but I don't know how they're going to get a drilling rig in the creek unless they get a crane in and drop it down, or if they have to maybe cut a road down, but I'm not sure how they're going to do that at all. And I think you need to know that before they put a drilling rig in the creek. And then the, the temporary bridge is an issue also, and I think the study needs to include just how this temporary bridge is going to work, is it going to be on the right-of-way, off the righty, off the right-of-way, do you going to need an easement off, of a private property? I know it's, it's, and, and bridge people have looked at that, and they can't figure out how a temporary bridge is going to be located on there, on Meadowway. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. So seeing no others, I'll close the public comment, and.
I'd move to approve the contract with the amendments as provided.
Second.
All right, so we have a section, motion, Wysoff, second, Goddard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. So, moving right along, which is back at this point to item number 14, which is in direction, first reading of ordinance number 770, amending Fairfax Town Code Chapter 8.20 Noise Control. And this has town manager and planning director on it, and I think you're pretty familiar with it, Jim. Is that right?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm not going to go back over the staff report that was provided to you earlier and also to the public on the website and at the public packet. You've been through this before when we mentioned, we discussed this in August 7th, and you directed us to come back with the ordinance change, and we were here in September, we got continued tonight, here we are. Basically, to paraphrase, these changes in noise ordinance for power equipment, we're cutting two hours off the evening in the week, limiting the hours of noise from these power equipments, whether the leaf blowers or power tools, from what's allowed now, eight to eight. whether the leaf blowers or power tools, from what's allowed now eight to eight P, eight AM to eight PM. We're limiting that to, from eight AM to six PM. In other words, cutting two hours off in the evening during the work week. And on the weekend, they're now allowed from nine in the morning till eight at night. We're cutting, we're recommending, or the process has resulted in cutting that down by four hours from nine to four on Saturday, Sunday. The other two minor changes is it gives the planning director the discretion to make exceptions to that under certain circumstances. And thirdly, it gives the ability of the town manager, for the town manager, police chief or fire chief to lift the equipment restrictions in cases of emergency, and there you have it.
And as I previously noted, in the discussion section, it does list town manager, police chief and fire chief. And in the ordinance itself, it lists instead of the tire chief, the town council. So.
I'm not sure which one is to type out.
Well, that's a good question.
This was.
So when you look at section, um, section five?
Yes, section five, line.
It says in the event that any.
Thirty-one.
declared by town council, town manager, or police chief, but yet in your staff report, you talk about, maybe I'm mixing this up.
No, no, that's entirely right, line thirty-one of the ordinance.
Right, if it's the fire chief versus the town council, there is a mistake there.
Yeah, I mean, I have no objection for the fire chief being added on there. Why not have both?
I, I think you should have both.
Yeah, why not have both? Just add the fire chief into the ordinance.
So be it. They're going with both?
That's very good.
So with that change to add town council?
Sure.
Or, excuse me, fire chief to the ordinance language on section five.
Well, add, add fire chief to the ordinance.
I beg your pardon, yes, I beg your pardon, yes.
So line thirty-one.
On line thirty-one, yes.
Right, so the ordinance would, as written, would stand with that amendment. And by the way, one little minor statement, Exhibit B wasn't included this time. It was in your packet last time, so hopefully you got to see the tri-fold that was requested.
Okay, so it's the same best practices thing as last time. Oh, oh, you say you have a copy right here? Does anybody?
I needed a copy.
So with that, I think you have everything you need to.
Move approval.
Okay.
Before we approve. Could I just um make one comment? And I don't wanna prolong the agony any more than necessary, but one of the things that's come up in my service on the council is residents occasionally complaining about utility boxes that are humming or making noise. And they don't tend to make noise, you know, in excess of sixty-five decibels or whatever we declare to be too, too noisy. But they make sort of a constant humming noise that really bothers people. And um there are some guidelines that I actually found, and maybe I'll pass them on to the town attorney after the meeting, but um I would, I, I really would like to add something about utility uh devices that are maintained in our public rights a way, because um we, we really don't have much ability to help residents who are going through this type of thing, other than begging with the public utility provider to make a change. So there, there is some statutory authority that was recently passed under Public Utility Code, Section fifty-eight eighty-five, that provides that local entities may provide reasonable regulations on state franchise holders, limiting the time, place and manner in which surface-mounted facilities are constructed and maintained in the public right of way. And um it's, it's something I'd like to bring back, because it's, we're getting more and more of these large devices in our public rights a way, and I think we should address it at some point, so, sorry.
But not now.
But not right now.
But, yeah, no, it's part of this, I mean.
Okay.
'Cause not right now.
In the future, we're gonna come back with revisions.
I will, I will shoot it to our town attorney, and we'll just kind of.
And we'll be talking to you about roosters in November, too.
But as we stand here today.
That, too. Roosters and utilities are.
Yeah, you know, as we can tell, I mean, the definitions of sixty-five decibels obviously doesn't cover the sound. Um, I mean, people can get really irritated just listening to mosquitoes flying around when they're trying to sleep at night, and roosters are another.
I'm sorry, the, the hour is going late here, and we have other.
It is going late, you're right.
Can I introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance seven-seventy?
You had to conduct the public hearing.
Public, uh, is, is there any member of staff that wants to speak as a member of the public?
Members of the public.
There is no comment from the public on this, so let's close public.
So as revised with the correction, I would like to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance seven-seventy.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have motion, Winesoff, second Bragman, to introduce and waive first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
I don't.
The ordinance. Isn't that what we do next?
No, not today.
Now, we have to do second reading next time around?
Oh, this is the first reading.
First reading.
This is first reading? We're done with that one?
Thirty seconds.
Okay, moving right on. That's the fastest thirty seconds I've ever seen. Thank you, Jim.
See ya.
And that was perhaps facetious. And we've continued fifteen, we have done sixteen. Seventeen is introduction, first reading of ordinance number seven-seven-two, amending the municipal code by adding section eight dot oh-eight dash one-three-zero, establishing mandatory commercial recycling within the town of Fairfax. And, do you wanna take this?
Sure, brief staff report. You may recall, you discussed this in August and September. And in September, you directed staff to come back and try to apply the ordinance to all commercial accounts within the town of Fairfax. Uh, the council's zero waste committee actually discussed the issue with MSS, Marin Sanitary Service. And at the time, I had a number seventeen, but we thought it applied to maybe twenty or so more businesses. Within the ordinance itself, we did have a provision for exemptions, and that would be a business that generates less than thirty-two gallons of waste and can demonstrate that upon request, as well as show that there's a reasonable alternative to diverting to recyclables. And so we thought Zero Waste Committee and MSS thought this ordinance as revised will work and meet the council standards. With that, we're recommending approval of the, the ordinance.
So can you clarify for me that businesses that aren't generating much, you know, which, what happens to them, that, that exemption is still in place?
The exemption's still in place for those businesses that don't generate a whole lot of waste, and basically can demonstrate they're sharing, they're dumping the recycling in an adjacent business.
And did the research show that these twenty businesses are pretty much in that category?
I, I think actually they show that you would get twenty more businesses, and then there's the other businesses that you wouldn't get because they'd be below this threshold.
Oh, okay.
And Marin Sanitary's argument was that possibility exists that if you made them do something, then they may only have a gallon of garbage, because they divert everything, and then they would have to go and pick, pick it up. And so they didn't think that made sense.
Okay. Any other questions from people on the council?
I did.
Any members of the public? Okay, I'll close public. Do I hear further discussion or a motion?
I'd move to waive first reading of ordinance.
Seven-seventy-two, amending the municipal code by adding section eight point oh-eight one-three-oh, establishing mandatory commercial recycling within the town of Fairfax.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, Bragman, second Goddard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. So we'll see it again next month, the second reading, right?
Right, yeah.
An approval. Then eighteen is continued, nineteen is continued, twenty is approval of short-term franchise fee.
No, we already did nineteen.
Twenty is approval of short-term franchise fee support for the Community Media Center of Marin, CMCM, and this is council member Bragman.
Yeah, and I'll try to make it as short as possible. Um, we discussed this in detail at our last meeting, and I thought we really had come to a consensus to give me authority to agree to what I think is sort of a coalescing consensus of, among the Marin Telecommunication Agency members to move ahead with some support for the media center. It still isn't final. There's still some different jurisdictions that are weighing in on it and considering it. San Rafael will be taking it up Monday, Larkspur took it up tonight. It actually has become somewhat of an issue with some of the jurisdictions, but I think I'm optimistically hoping that they will sort of agree with Fairfax that the long-term benefits to, to the community outweigh the short-term financial pain to each of our agencies, which for Fairfax, it's probably around seventy-five hundred dollars a year. It's not a big item for us, and this is becoming a, a very important, important media hub for the public here in Marin. So um with that, if, if my analysis of where we're at on this thing is correct, then um I will, when, when MTA meets again later this month, I hope to advocate to provide that short term. It's a, it's probably a three-year deal for the media center. Once the peg fees start getting paid in full by the cable provider, I'm, I can't give you a guarantee, but we've always scaled the operations of the media center with our franchise fees. So we, we have never expanded operations or the reach of the media center beyond our budget. So I just hope, I assume we're still all on the same page here. I think we've seen the benefits here in Fairfax. And with that, I would just open it up to my colleagues as far as any comments or concerns.
I, I just have a question. Do we have a sense of where this is going on the either formula or? I mean, I, I'm totally supportive of this, but I just wonder if we have a sense of which.
I don't think the hybrid formula's gonna fly, so I think it's probably going to be based on the percentage of franchise fees, which for a small agency like Fairfax, is probably, it's, that's the most beneficial or the most favorable to us as far as the actual decrease in franchise fees. But uh, you know, it, it really is a work in progress, and right now, really, the advocacy is really just getting out in the community and trying to explain to people what the real benefits of this thing are, especially as it's been gearing up and getting to critical mass of viewership. I will say, I was in San Anselmo last week, unexpectedly got unanimous approval from, from San Anselmo. Tiburon, once they see the presentation by the media center and really understand how highly leveraged the investment is as far as, as the number of people that this, um, the media center is really reaching, and what it's doing for local government, what it's gonna be doing for education, what it's gonna be doing to provide a platform, really, for local production to get on the airwaves, it's a pretty impressive resume that's, that we can present to, to the various councils, so.
Question then, San Rafael, because the way I see it, you need seventy-five percent of the franchise dollars, and they're a big chunk of those franchise dollars.
Right.
Essential chunk, right.
Are they, 'cause I think if they said no, you might be less than seventy-five percent.
Yeah, well, that remains to be seen. They've got a special meeting on Monday. I'll be attending that on Monday, um, Monday evening. And I don't know if that, the. The supermajority voting requirement will remain. There's been some discussion among some of the members about that, and I reviewed the bylaws, and we will see. I mean, we, hopefully, we will reach a consensus like our council has.
Larry, has, has Nevada met on it?
Nevada is not in our, is not in the.
Oh, they're not in.
Telecommunications agency, so they have their own, um, they have their own facilities. We have actually invited them in, and so that remains to be seen. A lot of, you know, Nevada actually negotiated a separate franchise agreement. It's a little bit different than what we're operating with. So to kind of get everybody on the same page, it takes a little bit of work to do that. So, but, you know, I'm optimistic. I mean, we have a very, we have a good pitch, we have a good program. And um, you know, it's just really, it's a question of, of educating and advocating and really demonstrating what, what this facility's all about. So if nothing else, this whole exercise of, of, of going, speaking out to all the different councils that we've done has helped do that. So I think long-term, it's, it's gonna happen, it has to happen. Marin is a forward-thinking county, and I think, I mean, this is just a necessity. This is infrastructure. This is just as important as a roadway, anything we do, this is just as important. It's digital infrastructure, and, and we need to step up.
Yeah, well, I agree. I mean, it's very much so. I'm, gee, the point of just broadcasting this council meeting tonight is, one example, it's just one facet of the benefits that this does. And as painful as this process is of going to the various councils and getting their support for this stopgap money to cover the shortfall, which really is only applying during the, um, the funding that he lost as a part of the, the, the media center lost as a, a part of the lawsuit. You know, it, it just serves to educate people all the more as to how essential this is. So I would support this in.
I actually would be honored to move to approve the short-term franchise fee support for the Community Media Center of Marin. Yeah.
I wish I could second. Yeah? No, no, I can't second it, so.
I'll second.
Yep. Yeah, thank you very much. And so we have a motion, Goddard, it's second Kohler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Maybe just add for the record, no members of the public.
Oh, sorry.
Are present to comment.
Except the people, you know.
And it's all about them.
On, brought to you by Community Center of Marin, yes. Yes, it is true, and members of staff can act, comment as members of the public, so I'm sorry not to ask you once again for that. Yeah, okay. So that brings us to number twenty-one, discussing, discussion and consider. That's continued? Oh, sorry, I forgot to mark it.
Twenty-two and eleven, and eleven will be quick.
Twenty-two and, oh, eleven's on the tail end, yes. Twenty-two is approval of agreement with Marin County for proceeds from Marin Park's Open Space and Farmland Preservation Transactions and Use Tax Ordinance, also known as Measure A. Town manager has a report on this.
Sure, in terms of the recommendations, what's attached is a draft agreement. I was asking for authority for the town manager to execute the final version of the agreement. However, if the council likes, we could just, whenever we get that final agreement, we can come back to you with it if you prefer. The key recommendation we like, those, to form an ad hoc committee to develop the work plan to, to use those funds. And we're suggesting two members of the council, two members of the Open Space Commission, and two members of Park, just because there might be some different interests in terms of how to use the funds. Maybe as a little background, Measure A was actually adopted in November two thousand two, approximately ten million dollars, two thousand twelve, did I say two, sorry. Uh, approximately ten million per year of that, about fifteen percent goes to the special districts, municipalities and the county. They, no, I'm sorry, it's municipalities and special districts. Uh, we believe our share will be roughly a little over forty thousand dollars per year for the period of the measure. Can only be used for maintaining, restoring existing parks, constructing new parks, open space, vegetation management. And what we're doing is we're asking that you form a committee so we could develop the work plan, get it in place, and then actually collect the money when it's available in January. And that concludes the staff report.
Okay, any comments by council members?
Yeah, I think Garrett's wise to advise us to put off authorizing the agreement because there might be revisions to the agreement, it seems, as you go forward. You can always do that more timely, but forming the. You can always do that more timely, but forming the ad hoc committee seems wise.
As far as the ad hoc, I know Barbara's interested in joining that, and I think, you know, she'd be a great representative for us. I'm interested in doing it, I don't, I don't want to hog the spot if there's other members that are interested.
Well, yeah, of course, anytime there's, you know, divvying up public money, a bunch of people are interested. I'm wondering, Barbara, if, I mean, there are going to be two members of the Open Space Committee also in this proposed thing. I mean, are you basically going to advocate for the Open Space Committee position?
I think, as a FOS liaison, I would certainly bring that to the table, but I think one of the things I've shown on the council is that I have a broader view of Fairfax than just open space, but clearly, that is something near and dear to my heart, but so are parks and recreation, so...
As are the network of trails we have around Fairfax, which have no other source of funding.
So, I'd very much like to be a part of that committee.
Wait for, no, no. Number seven.
Pretty did it.
We did it.
Your item just came up with, it just passed.
The audience...
You're welcome to come and stay, and, you know, it's fascinating. We're actually talking about Measure A funds right now.
Okay, well, there's...
I mean, yeah, my, I am interested also, and my issue that I think really needs some attention is the network of pedestrian trails that we have around town, which would clearly fall under this in two of the three categories, so...
So, just for clarification, are we deciding on who the council members will be, or are we asking for approval of the, to acquire the funds?
No, actually, you're appointing, you have to decide appointing you which of the five to...
Form an ad hoc committee.
Which council members would be on it.
Got, sorry.
Okay, I mean, could I just say, if, I'm fine if you want to, if you want to take the spot, so if you, I know Barbara's interested.
Yeah.
I'm interested, you're interested.
I know you're interested also, but if you are, in fact, we have talked about these trails also individually, and I know that you also support them, too, so...
I do indeed.
Yeah, okay. So, and nobody really wants another set of meetings to go to.
Do you want to flip a coin?
Sure, I'll flip you for it.
Okay.
There are two people that are sitting here that are on a number of committees, both of them flipping a coin.
That's, that's true.
Okay, I call?
Okay.
Heads. Heads it is.
It's heads. So, you win. Does that mean you have to sit through the meetings, or does that mean I have to sit through the meetings?
I'll take it.
Okay. Great. Sorry?
He gets it, or he does you?
I get to pick, I get to pick.
Yeah, he gets to pick.
So, I can, okay, I join.
I'll move that we appoint both Barbara and Larry to the new ad hoc committee.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, Renee seconds, Winesoff and Goddard. Winesoff moves, Goddard seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So...
And I believe the park commissioners and Open Space Committee would, they would pick their own representatives to this...
Correct, correct. We'll take that as agenda items for them.
Okay.
And then set up a meeting.
All right, thank you. Now, we have, last on the agenda is item 11.
And I just have a few quick things, so be quick.
Yes.
Oh.
Let me, let me just say what 11 is for the benefit of our audience. 11 is adoption of resolution number 13-51, supporting a moratorium on hydraulic fracturing in the state of California. Councilmember Bragman and Mayor Reed, and, yes.
So, I want to say I'm supportive of the resolution. I have some clarification that might affect the second whereas in the resolution that talks about that Dogger has no records of the locations or numbers of wells. So, there are, Dogger does have a database as well. There is one place where you can actually access the records of hydrofract wells in California, and that is, and I can, I can enter this into the record, but you guys decide how you want to deal with it. So, it's geotracker.waterboards.ca.gov-gamma, G-A-M-A. And what that does is you can, you can look at all different types of wells in the state of California, including public water supply wells, environmental wells, and what you do is you can do a search for an area and then check on hydrofract and oil/gas fields, and you can pull up the hydrofract wells. That pulls from data from Dogger, and they do have some information. There's also, that also pulls from FracFocus, and FracFocus is a, it's a foundation that was created by, it's really oil and gas entities, knowing what was coming, what was coming at them. They decided to move forward and create a database where you can pull wells all over the country, and you can also pull chemical data. Now, it's probably about 90 to 95% of all oil and gas companies have participated. What's not, what isn't participating is independent, but you can pull a lot of information on hydrofract wells, and it'll be wells from the last five years. So, just for your consideration, there is some information, and there are databases. It's not going to be everything that we want, but, for example, you may want to look at, I pulled just some chemical data off FracFocus for some wells in Los Angeles, if you want to look at that. But just the point is, there is some information out there, it's not going to be everything we want, and we might want to make note of, Dogger does have some information, FracFocus has others. Clearly, we can get better than this, but...
So, maybe we should change the language from no records to insufficient records?
Yeah.
Or incomplete records?
Incomplete.
So, that, that would be more accurate.
Yep.
And then, the other thing that it states is, you know, as far as the types of chemicals used, isn't it, isn't there a, an exception that allows these fracking companies to not disclose the chemicals?
Yeah, but, so, so through Dogger, they do not have chemical information, but through FracFocus, they are providing chemical information.
Except trade secret.
Right.
They're not disclosing trade secret chemicals.
But, for example, on what I pulled, they are, they do show where they are, do have trade secrets, and where I pulled this Los Angeles frac data, there is no trade secrets in that, and Halliburton is some of the reporting. So, it's, I'm not trying to...
Sounds pretty sketchy to me.
I'm not trying to paint a picture that we have everything we would like and that, you know, what we really want, so I'm not, I'm totally supportive of this resolution. I just wanted to clear up that there is some information out there.
Right, and I think, I think the resolution should be clarified to, to indicate that there's, you know, incomplete records, but, you know, my understanding is there's a black hole as far as the trade secret chemicals that are being introduced into fracked wells that are, you know, not only are they not being disclosed, there's, there's a pretty strong effort by the oil and gas industry to prevent regulators from even finding out what it is.
You're correct. However, I will say that FracFocus knows that it's coming, so they're trying to provide more transparency, they're not going to provide everything, and I will tell you, it's worth looking at it just to see what you can find. So, I don't disagree.
Okay, well, why don't we...
I just say, your clarification would be good.
I think clarification, I mean, we should get it as accurate as we can, so...
Yeah, I agree that our ordinance needs to reflect reality.
Yeah.
So, if we work the language of...
Has incomplete, has incomplete records?
Incomplete records?
And does not maintain thorough records of the types and amounts of chemicals?
Actually, Dogger does not maintain records of that, whereas FracFocus does, and if you don't want to mention FracFocus, that's fine. So, I think if you just said incomplete records of the locations or numbers of wells, and then the rest of it is accurate...
Is good as is, because we're talking about Dogger.
Correct. That's all I would say, incomplete records.
Yeah, I mean, makes the resolution incomplete, but, you know, doesn't have to, I mean, it's what you're naming.
Okay, so, we, we'll change that one, we'll change it from no records to incomplete records.
Yeah.
The other thing I wanted to point out to the council is I pulled a map of the potential fracking areas in California, and it's not a great map, and the maps do vary, but on this map, there is a gas and oil, it looks like a gas and oil field right up the coast of Marin. So, you've got the Monterey Shale is in, is central California, but you'll see there's a leg of it that goes right up, right up the coast.
Up the San Andreas Fault, basically.
That's, that's right. So, one of the things I wanted to add to, to the resolution was to urge the board supervisors to include a moratorium on fracking in the countywide plan, which, for some reason, they haven't done. But that would be a very easy thing to add in our final, sorry, in, in our resolution at the end, therefore be it resolved, the town council of the town of Fairfax supports an immediate moratorium on hydraulic fracturing in the state of California and within the Marin County general plan. I would add those words, and I would, I would like this to be sent to the board of supervisors. Yeah, so it's at the very end, at where there's a resolution.
I don't know where it is.
Oh, okay, okay. Immediate moratorium on hydraulic fracturing in the state of California, including, sorry.
And in the Marin County general plan.
And within the Marin County general plan.
Can I just ask you, could I, just wondering, you were using the word incomplete, is it, is it more accurate to maybe say insufficient? Because it could, I mean, it could argue what's complete, where it's not sufficient for, I don't know, you know, you know the language.
Insufficient sounds good.
Insufficient, I think, is probably better, you know?
Yeah.
So, I, it's probably a better, more descriptive word, so, so that's, on the second paragraph, it would be insufficient records of the locations. And I can get you my notes, just, you got it? Okay, thanks.
Okay. Terrific, so...
We're done? We have to pass the resolution?
Ask for public comment.
Public comment? Would you like to comment on this?
Go for it, bitch.
I'll be brief. I think that's a great resolution. I mean, there's actually a lot of concerns now that fracking has an impact on seismically sensitive areas.
We have that in some of the whereas, you see.
I mean, it's crucial for Marin to take a stand on this. I think it's a great recommendation.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, is there a motion in a second?
And with that, I would close the public thing, and so...
I'd like to make a motion with the change of discuss that we pass the resolution.
All right, so it's a motion, Kohler, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, Goddard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Nobody opposed, so thanks.
Don't we have to move to adjourn? I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right. And that is probably unanimous.
Yes.
Thank you.